All right, can folks go ahead and get their seats? Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, the Pompano Beach City Commission Meeting, July 8th, 2025 at 1:00. If I could ask everyone to please silence their cellphones or put them on vibrate during the meeting, that'd be great. That way, we don't get disrupted by somebody getting a phone call in the middle of the meeting. So, please, put your cellphones on vibrate or just turn them off, either way. Thank you. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fournier.
Here.
Mayor Harden.
Here, thank you. Our invocation today will be given by the Pastor Dr. Gary Kolbuck from the Grace Church. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And Pastor, if you could please add to your prayers the family of the flooding victims out in Texas, and also, it's sad to say, we had a death here in Pompano Beach, one of our pioneers, Lulabel Clark, 103 years old. She just passed away. So, please, keep her in your prayers also. Can we all please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge?
Let's pray together. Most heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have to begin a meeting in our city with prayer. We pray today for those that are serving the people of Pompano, and they're asking for your wisdom and guidance as they make decisions that will impact the income of the city and the residents that live here. We ask you today to guide them, to make decisions in line with the foundations of our nation, that everyone will be able to enjoy life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. From the wealthiest to the poorest, we ask that these leaders make decisions that will benefit all of us. In a time where cities across our nation are in turmoil and unrest, we thank you for the peace that our city is enjoying. We ask your protection in the days ahead. We specifically lift up to you these families that are out there in Texas, the struggles that they're having, those that have lost loved ones, the one here locally as well. God, there are families across our nation that are grieving right now for a variety of reasons, and we do ask you to comfort them and give them your grace during this time. We ask you to bless our mayor, and those on our city council, our law enforcement, our firefighters, our other public servants. Lord, we ask you to protect them, to take them home to their families safe each night, give them wisdom as they serve and protect the residents of our city. And in all of this, we realize that every blessing comes from you. So, today, we give you thanks. We bring our petitions, and we ask for your direction during today's meeting. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. All right. All right. Can I get a motion approving the regular city commission meeting minutes of June the 10th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion approving the city commission budget workshop minutes of June the 24th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous, thank you. On our agenda this afternoon, we're going to be postponing item number 11 until the September 9th, 2025 meeting. So, number 11 will be postponed until September 9th. And also, we are shifting the special presentation by State Representative Chip Lamarka. We're shifting that to a time certain at 2:30 this afternoon. So, we will take that up when Representative Lamarka gets here at 2:30. Mr. Harrison, any other changes to our agenda?
No, sir.
Very good. Can I get a motion approving the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous, thank you. On our consent agenda this evening, this afternoon, we'll be pulling items 2, 3, 4, and 6. So, items 2, 3, 4, and 6 will be pulled for individual discussion. All other items on the consent agenda will be eligible for discussion during audience to be heard. All right. Very good. That takes us up to our special presentations. I will come right over to the podium over there. Hang tight. All right, we're going to go ahead and shift the script just a little bit. We'll go ahead and move on to our proclamations. We've got a couple of proclamations here this evening. Let's see, let's go ahead and move on to our 20 years of volunteer service to the community Emergency Response Team. Let's see, can we get Ms. Doris O'Donnell and folks to come on up from our CERT team? Come on up. Yes. In case, in case you all don't know, we've got, we've got a group of volunteers here in the city of Pompano Beach, the Community Emergency Response Team. And they are a bunch of volunteers who go through extensive training through our fire department, and Crystal and Kim take care of this kind of stuff. But they go through training, and they help out whenever there's a need in the community, whether it's an emergency, be it a hurricane, fire, tornado, whatever it is, or just they, we need some help doing various things around the city during festivals and things of that nature. But these core volunteers, they're always there. Not only that, but they're prepared. They go through extensive training, as I, as I mentioned, so they can help people in an emergency. And these, these folks do great work for us, and it's, it's truly an honor to say thank you to them. So, Doris, let me read this. Volunteer recognition. Oops, second. Wrong one. Here we go. Volunteer recognition. Whereas, the Pompano Beach Fire Rescue Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, was formed 29 years ago in 1996. And whereas, CERT is a national volunteer program created to engage the community to prepare for, respond to, and recover from any emergency situation or disaster. Whereas, the Pompano Beach CERT program educates residents about disaster preparedness and trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, terrorism awareness, and disaster medical operations. And whereas, as of 2025, it is recognized that Ms. Doris O'Donnell has provided 20 years of volunteer service to Pompano Beach Community Emergency Response Team. Yes. And whereas, during her many years of service, and she started in the program in 2005, Ms. Doris O'Donnell has selflessly given herself to our CERT program through countless hours of community outreach and participation in events that have contributed to our community's safety and well-being before, during, and after emergencies. Whereas, Pompano Beach CERT volunteers remain a valuable resource dedicated to making our community safer, stronger, and better prepared to respond to any emergency situation or disaster. Now, therefore, I, Rex Harden, Mayor of the City of Pompano Beach, on behalf of the entire city commission, do hereby acknowledge Ms. Doris O'Donnell for her dedication and commitment to the city of Pompano Beach. She has continually demonstrated her willingness to place her concern for her fellow man and the public good ahead of her personal interests. Done this 8th day of July, 2025. Rex Harden, Mayor. Doris, thank you so much. You are truly an asset to our city.
I don't know how I can even begin to say what I need to say. I know it's been a great experience. I've met so many beautiful people, everyone all dedicated to what we need to do. I love my city of Pompano Beach. I've been here since 1978, and I just enjoy being able to volunteer and help the people in the community, no matter where I am or where they are. I just can't thank enough, thank you all enough for this honor. I really, really appreciate. And I just appreciate all, all my.
Thank you, Doris, and I'd like to point out also that she just celebrated her 90th birthday. All right. Yeah, there we go. Now, now, if I could ask Mr. Alan Warman to come forward. Alan, here we go. Once again, you, you pretty much heard my spiel, and it's times two. But I've got to read this one, because here we've got indeed a rare recognition, volunteer recognition. Whereas, the Pompano Beach Fire Rescue Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, was formed 29 years ago in 1996. And whereas, CERT is a national volunteer program created to engage the community to prepare for, respond to, and recover from any emergency situation or disaster. And whereas, the Pompano Beach CERT program educates residents about disaster preparedness and trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, terrorism awareness, and disaster medical operations. And whereas, as of 2025, it is recognized that Mr. Alan Warman has provided 25 years of volunteer service to Pompano Beach CERT. Whereas, during his many years of service, since he started in the program in 2000, Mr. Alan Warman has selflessly given of himself to the CERT program through countless hours of community outreach and participation in events that have contributed to our community's safety and well-being before, during, and after emergencies. Whereas, Pompano Beach CERT volunteers remain a valuable resource dedicated to making our community safer, stronger, and better prepared to respond to any emergency or situation or disaster. Now, therefore, I, Rex Harden, Mayor of the City of Pompano Beach, on behalf of the entire city commission, do hereby acknowledge Mr. Alan Warman for his dedication and commitment to the city of Pompano Beach. He has continually demonstrated his willingness to place his concern for his fellow man and the public good ahead of his personal interests. Done this 8th day of July, 2025. Alan, thank you so much for what you have done so. Yes.
Well, the directors of the CERT team, Hindley and Crystal warned me about talking too much, because they know I have a habit of, I could use up this whole chamber, but volunteerism is an important part if you're a citizen of any community. For 27 years, I did real estate in Pompano, and you always got to give back. You can't always extract. And in my, here in Pompano, I decided to be part of the CERT team. And you do a lot of good. I just let them know I'll probably be a little bit more active, because I'm semi-retiring. I was in the, for the last 16 years, in the prosthetic industry and counsel amputees, military, and civilians, which is what I was doing for the last 15 years. So, now, I'll probably give a little bit more time to CERT and promoting CERT, because all the citizens should have this training. If it's gone off a bit of an emergency, this is what we need. We need everybody to be able to help themselves and their neighbor, because the emergency services will be overwhelming. So, even though the ESO and the fire department are fantastic, at certain times, we have to be able to pull up our pants and help ourselves. That's what CERT's all about. So, if you're not a member, come get an application. All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
I think they said it all. Thank you all for being here. We have so many of our CERT members here. If you're a CERT member, can you just raise your hand? I just want you to see how many CERT members we have. Thank you. Yes, you're going to take it next, right? We got Kodak's going to take it next. So, thank you all, and if, if you would like to sign up, go to pompanobeachfl.gov/getready. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, great, great job. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, CERT members. To tell you what, you truly are a gem for our community. Thank you so much. All right, I'd also like to take just a moment to recognize, we have our county commissioner with us, County Commissioner Lamar Fisher. Lamar Fisher. Lamar Fisher, he's, he's here. Always like to recognize fellow elected officials. All right, so that, after we changed up the script a little bit, now, let's go ahead and go back to the top of the, top of the order, so to speak. This is a key to the city to be presented to Kodak Black. All right. I stand before you today to recognize one of Pompano Beach's own, an individual whose journey from these very streets to international acclaim has been remarkable, but whose heart has never left this community. Today, we're not here to only celebrate the commercial success of Bill Capri, better known to the world as the artist Kodak Black. Yep. But more importantly, to acknowledge the impact he continues to make right here at home. Kodak, your music may have reached millions around the world, but your generosity has touched thousands right here in Pompano Beach. Whether it's providing air conditioning systems to families in need during sweltering summers, delivering hundreds of turkeys during the holidays, gifting Christmas presents and bikes to children, or paying rent for over 200 struggling families, twice, twice. Your actions speak volumes about the kind of man you have become. You've shown us that giving back isn't about fanfare, it's about your heart. You've used your platform to not just rise, but to lift others along the way. In looking back at past recipients of the key to the city, like football great quarterback Lamar Jackson, or Olympic swimmer and record holder Jesse Vasio, and even community activist, Ms. Jeanette Copeland, they all share a common theme of giving back to our community in their own way. And so, on behalf of the city of Pompano Beach, I present you with this key to the city, a symbol of our appreciation and recognition for your unwavering commitment to this community. Congratulations, Kodak Black.
Man, so much I wouldn't say. Well, I don't want words to get in the way. Thank you for the birthday wish. I saw it, I saw the video, and that was special. It was special, yeah. Appreciate you for everything. And, uh, we was at the, the building across the street a few weeks ago, and they brought it up to me. I say, no, please. I say, no, please, I don't want it. I swear to God, no, don't give, I swear to God, this is not what I do anything for. I was like, please, I don't want the spotlight. They gave it to me anyway. God, y'all wait, get all the glory. I'm nothing. And thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. God bless everyone. God bless all the others. God bless all the other ladies. Yeah. Hell, yeah. Father Alicia, she run track, my little cousin, she gas.
Thanks again, Kodak. And if you need help giving money away, talk to the Community Foundation of Broward. They do a great job. They could help you out. Seriously. Yep. All right. Very good. Lot of excitement here today. All right. Now, it's a little different now, but now we're going to, we've got something else to deal with. Recognition to the City of Pompano Beach Budget Department for receiving the highest award in governmental budgeting for fiscal year 2025. The certificate of recognition for budget preparation is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to those individuals who have been instrumental in their government unit achieving the distinguished budget presentation award. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Joshua Waters, Head of Budget.
Thank you. This is a tough act to follow. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Commission, I'm Josh Waters. I'm the city's Budget Director. This afternoon, you'll see in front of you, you've each been given copies of the fiscal year 2026 Recommended Budget, Capital Budget, and Line Item Budget Book in detail, but it's also my honor to share some really good news with you. The City of Pompano Beach has once again been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association of the U.S. and Canada with the distinguished budget presentation award for the current year's budget for the fiscal 2025 budget, the 11th straight year that the city has won this award. This is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting, and it reflects the city's continued commitment to meeting the principles of transparency, accountability, and excellence in financial planning. To receive this award, a panel of independent reviewers determines that the government satisfies nationally recognized guidelines that assess how well the budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications tool. Alongside the distinguished budget award, a certificate of recognition for budget preparation was presented to our Budget Department staff. I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work that went into preparing the fiscal year 2025 budget, and thank the city manager, the city management team, the department directors and their staff, but I really want to thank the, personally acknowledge the Budget Office staff who went into preparing last year's budget document, Karone Grant, Liliana Alvarez, and of course, our former Budget Director, Arietta Diamanti. The fiscal '26 document that you see in front of you follows the same rigorous criteria, and we look forward to receiving the same award next year. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Lots of good news today. And just to cap it off real, real quick, Blanchili High School, an A-rated high school. Go Tigers![966.24][966.24](APPLAUSE) Yeah. Yes. There you go. Yes. Here, here. Go Tigers! Hats off to Mr. Williams out there and all the staff and students. It's, it's, it's great news, so thank you for that. All right. That takes us up to Audience to Be Heard. Do we have anyone signed up for Audience to Be Heard, Mr. Alfred?
We do, Mayor. We have 14 speakers.
Very good.
First speaker. Andrew Young, followed by Wayne Okun, followed by Carl Uriere, followed by Mark Integria.
Very good. Just give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Young, 1340 South Ocean Boulevard, Pompano Beach, Florida. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and District Commissioners. This is a continuation of my presentation from June 24th. At that time, I was requesting a removal of the median that is in front of the developing Waldorf Historia condominium at 1350 South Ocean Boulevard. If you look at the screen, and I've passed out copies of this to everyone, you will see here that this is the Waldorf Historia development. To the right is the claret, and their driveway right here. To the left is the Renaissance in their driveway. I am focusing on the median that is currently in, in place on, in front of the Waldorf Historia. This is A1A, and this is heading south. This median and the dotted lines represent where it was altered previously, so I am not asking for a precedent. The Department of Transportation was here on June 10th and actually mentioned that the meeting had, median had been altered. I am requesting that the median be fully removed, especially during construction of the Waldorf Historia for the queuing up of construction vehicles. The median right now, and the dotted lines, as I mentioned, are the altered. The reason the median was altered was because they wanted to put in a queue lane for the driveway to the Renaissance, which is on the left here. This is the Renaissance driveway, and they shortened the median so that they, cars could queue up in the center lane. The driveway for the Waldorf Historia will actually be where that arrow entrances and a little bit to the right of that. So the median for cars heading southbound will block cars for queuing, from queuing up to get into their driveway and to get into the Waldorf Historia. This is also causing construction vehicles to back up, to back up on A1A in an active lane as well, so it is a safety issue, not only for pedestrians and cyclists, there are two cycle lanes on either side of the median, but also for pedestrians and emergency vehicles that travel south regularly to Holy Cross Hospital. Therefore, I am requesting that this median be, the congestion and backup as a result of the median, both short and long term, is a safety issue, and I am requesting that it be removed. And with my 22 seconds remaining, are there any questions?
Very good. Thank you for that, sir. Appreciate your presentation. We'll take that under advisement. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Wayne Okun, followed by Carl Uriere.
Sir, if I could ask you, just come to the center podium. It's easier for us. He used that podium because he had an overhead. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yep.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Wayne Okun, and I'm a longtime resident of Pompano Beach. I'm here today to share my disappointment with how things are being handled here with Palm Air. First, I want to say how let down I feel by Commissioner Darlene Smith. She's supposed to be our voice, but instead, she's supporting more and more development and spending. We keep seeing big projects like the pump, and it's Costco, and all those parking spaces being pushed through. And now we're hearing about warehouses and light industry. All this is happening with thousands of new apartments and townhouses, which means more traffic, more trucks, more congestion. Yet we residents weren't really asked what we think. It feels like our concerns don't matter. The 1985 Palm Air Settlement Agreement was supposed to protect green spaces, but now with flex units and all this development, we're seeing those protections ignored. There's been poor communication about what's happening, and we're left confused and worried about our future. It's frustrate, frustrating to see how little we're included in decisions that affect us directly. Then there's City Manager Greg Harrison. He's decided to live in Palm Air, but it doesn't seem like he respects what makes our community special. City Manager Harrison has not been engaged with the community. Therefore, Mr. Harrison's employment with the city should be terminated. The city should hire a city manager with emphasis on community-led development. Community-led development. The leader in Palm Air seems more interested in pleasing developers than listening to residents. The idea that the city should buy the Palms golf course just to avoid political backlash is unrealistic when considering the City of Pompano Beach's BBB, Big Bloated Budget. Let's be clear, the only communication was at a Democratic meeting at the Skolnick Center when Darlene Smith showed up and said the golf course, one golf course, would be purchased by the city.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate, appreciate your input. Thank you, sir.
Hasn't been three minutes.
It's, sir, it's, thank you for your, your statement. Appreciate it. Next speaker.
Mayor.
Commissioner Perkins.
We ask the sound people to turn, turn the, both mics up a little louder on both sides.
Can, can, if they can do it, yeah, absolutely. Can we get the microphones for the audience and the staff side? Get those turned up so we can hear better in the chambers? Very good. Next speaker? Over, over here, sir. I'm sorry. Not unless you've cleared it with Ms. King ahead of time. Appreciate it. No.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Carl Kuveri. I'm also from Palm Air, PAC 2. I think it's the second largest PAC, could be the third after Darlene's PAC, I guess. Correct me if I'm wrong. Anyway, I'm here for the issue that might turn up to be untenable for yourself as mayor in terms of conflict of interest with people associated with the city and what they're doing with developers. This is a new executive order. I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just reminding everybody and saying it on the record, there's a new executive order that is now state law, signed by the governor in Tallahassee. And regardless of politics, I mean, I for one, I'm British. I don't care Democrat versus Republican. I'm just an owner here. But it is peculiar that this had to be state law because there seems to be a trend of people associated in this case with the city and are on our boards, our HOA boards. So if you are a voting board member, you can decide to suppress or release news about such meetings as a gentleman rightfully said that we are need, to be informed and engaged in developments around us. So my issue now is, or my question, will the mayor challenge Tallahassee on this, or will he address it with the named individuals related to the city and that appear to be in flagrant conflict of interest when it comes to being on the developers' side in terms of dealings in the past and in their roles now in our communities? So you can't really cheer, cheerlead for developers while at the same time being in a fiduciary capacity that is supposed to protect the owners in your community. And with that, I've got a minute left, so I'd like to hear your answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Mark Integria, followed by Medilla Akiti.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Entregola. I live at 1401 South Ocean Boulevard. I have a few things I want to address from recent meetings that I watch on YouTube pretty religiously. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Fessick, and the Vice Mayor for often being a, a voice of sanity in these meetings. First, I want to talk about those islands on A1A. I live in Emerald Tower. We had our island removed. Three accidents in the first 45 days of installation, and they finally were taken out. I could tell you that something else bad is going to happen because you cannot see pedestrians standing in the island waiting to cross. They are neither safe nor are they beautiful. I hate to tell everybody. I also applaud the suggestion that the council get involved in, in major developments in the city. It just seems like if you're a developer with deep pockets, you can build whatever you want, AKA the Ritz Carlton. I'm often appalled by what is actually said in here. The Atlantic Boulevard project, somebody will actually come in here and say, "We were basing that on a study that's eight, 10, or more years old, and yet we build on every spit of land, and does anybody think that we have more traffic than we had 10 years ago? Great idea, let's take a lane away." And by the way, was done over vigorous community opposition. City Hall, same thing. And again, the Vice Mayor points out, "We work four days a week, and it's more self-served than ever, so why are we doing it?" Pompano is building on every spit of land. I could tell you that personally, all these buildings are going up. I have zero confidence that anybody has looked at the sewer and water infrastructure. The sewer pipes are under pressure from pumping from these buildings. When they break, there's going to be a catastrophe. Lastly, at the last meeting, Commissioner Perkins spoke about what she felt was a threatening email from the city's attorney regarding having to vote and having to approve certain things. Mayor Harden, in the same meeting, praised that same communication from the attorney. I can only say that from my perspective, I hope our city attorney used the same vigorous language to caution the then-city council that we were entering into a contract that had no off-ramp, that we could not cancel, and that put the master developer in charge with us having no voice. Perhaps that was the point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, please, no applause. Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good, good afternoon, and this is just a reminder. Even though we have two, we have a prenatal care, we have an OB, and we have primary care, two in your city at 601 Atlantic Boulevard and 211 Northwestern Avenue, we still, Broward Health, and I apologize because my name is Melida Akiti. I am the corporate executive from Broward Health. And I just wanted to remind all of you about this coming Saturday, July 12, that we are having our Stay Healthy Together. Like I was saying, we have two comprehensive primary care, an OB care, and also pediatric care in your city, but we knew, we understand- But we knew, we understand, because we were looking at our emergency room data, and we know that emergency room, we have enough. But what we don't have is preventative care. And that is the reason why this coming Saturday, we are launching Stay Healthy Together, and it's going to start from 10 to 11. And the goal is at the Mitchell Moore Park, and the goal is to bring health care, not sick care, health care to your city. Many of you have pockets in your city. Even though you may have an affluent area, you have an area that needs your, our help. We are going to be in your city for two years, so you can use us how you feel that is needed in your, in your community. So please know that Stay Healthy Together is going to be in your city. We already, already looked at the data in our emergency room, and we know that our hospitals are meeting your emergency care and your inpatient care. But one of the areas that we are not meeting is your preventative care. And we want to provide you with preventative care so you will not use the emergency room for things that are able to be dealt with in the practice, but many individuals don't have ability to pay. And Broward Health is your safety net. We have reduced your tax mileage for two years consecutively, just because we have the right mentality, and that is to provide preventative care to your city. We are not here because of, to take from your city, we're here to give to your city, because we take care of every single person, regardless of ability to pay. When you walk into our emergency room, we will never, ever ask you for your, for your insurance card. When we finish treating you, when we provide it, sir, then that is when we're going to ask you. And after we ask you, if you need ambulatory care, we are going to provide that for you. This is what safety net is all about. Thank you so much, city. I expect to see you, Mayor. I know you're going to be there, and the Vice Mayor. I hope to see all of you there on Saturday. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker?
Roger Phillips, followed by Mike Skversky, followed by Ed Phillips. Roger Phillips?
Roger Phillips, 2620 Northwest 10th Street. And as always, I like to start off that the truth hurts. You know, thank you for honoring Kodak Black and giving him the key to the city that lets the community to know that he's been forgiven for whatever of the past things he's done, and we may be able to have him do other things in the city, for the city of Pompano. I'm here today for my, the event that New Light Group is having on November 29. It's called Exit 36 Southern Abuse, Fourth Annual Homelessness and Mental Health Awareness Day. I'm part of, I deal with boots on the ground with the indigent, the people that the police run around all day long and can't, never seem to get a handle on this homeless situation, even though it's law that the homeless got, but what can you do with them? We can't incarcerate them, but we can, boots on the ground, we can find out why are they homeless and what it is that they need to be unhomeless. I gave everyone a paper that tells you what indigency means. It means everything that's on this fire. The foodless, the addiction, the homeless, and people in the houseless. And so I'm asking the city, six months from the day we're having this event, and I'm asking the city, "Mayor, just stop by. And y'all stop by and say home, say hello to the homeless people, the mentally ill and the people that we, that we have a person in charge never mentioned. Stop by and talk to the addict and find out what they need to come off the street." This is what my group does for the city of Pompano. We deal with the people that nobody else want to deal with. And believe it or not, some people hear us, and some people listen, and some people want help. So thank you to BSO for all that they do, because they have been making a difference in the city of Pompano with the homeless and the mental health and the drug abusing. They have been making a difference, and I want to thank, thank BSO and thank the city. And hopefully you come out to our event, the city of Pompano Beach. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Alcaraz just wanted straight sets. No one knows what I'm talking about. You do?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. You're cooler than I thought.
Mike Skversky, 1630 Southwest 5th Avenue. From watching the tennis, I forgot what I was going to talk about. You know, I want to piggyback on what, somebody brought up about getting rid of these lanes on Atlantic and Dixie, because as one who is not a health freak, the trees that were put up next to the Taco Bell, the Kentucky Fried Chicken, I pulled out a Taco Bell the other day. You can't see because the trees are in the way. You got to push your car out onto the highway and look to see before you go. I mean, I know they're up there now, the trees, and they're not going to be taken down, but it's pretty darn dangerous by putting those trees on that straight line when you try to pull out a Kentucky Fried Chicken or any of those places. And I like to go to those places. To me, that is what I call very good health food. I love it. You all can eat your steak. I like my real food. Now, I pulled this out over at, over at one of the parks on why we need a new city hall. I mean, this stuff that you guys put together is just pure propaganda. Saving $18 million, a taxpayer dollars, for a new city hall? I mean, we could get, use a new roof here, that's about it. I'm looking at some of the other stuff they wrote about how if we add on to this building, it won't look proper. People remodel their houses all the time. You just match it up with the same paint. I mean, this is, this is beyond stupid, what I've read. I looked at it. One said something about, I'm just glancing, about a Category Four hurricane. We've never had a Category Four hurricane in South Florida outside of Andrew. You actually think one's going to come straight at us? And then about flooding? When was the last time it flooded in here? I mean, this, what was put together here is just a bunch of propaganda. It's, and then, and I'm looking at the back about, about what's going to be put next to city hall. Let's be honest, high rises, that's what's going to be put here. That's what you want to put here. And the main reason why you want to put high rises all over the darn place is this old town is not doing that well. And we're forking money after money. It's nonstop advertising over there. The one place we weren't funding went out of business. That shows you how well it's doing. So as long as the taxpayers keep funding, then I guess they'll stay in business. That's the only reason why you want to build here, is to put high rises up all over the place. No other reason.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Ed Phillips, followed by Mary Phillips, followed by Vicente Thor.
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Ed Phillips. I currently reside at 384 Northwest 19th Street, Pompano Beach. Mayor, I am here to inform you, first of all, that I am representing the Tiger Trail Festival today, and that we're coming upon our 30-year anniversary. Thirty years of 100-plus, maybe 200 or 300-plus volunteers throughout the year, these many years. And I'm very proud to say that this city has always been a partner of the Tiger Trail Festival, the only street festival currently in the city of Pompano. I also would like to say that all the Commissioners, not unless you say differently, have always been honorary members of the Tiger Trail Festival, and I am very proud to say that. Mayor, what you have before you is not a small component of the 40-plus, maybe 50 as we grow, volunteers from the neighborhood, from all over Pompano, really. Every, every segment of this city normally has a representative on the Tiger Trail Festival meetings and/or boards. So Mayor, our theme is strengthen our community with new opportunities for the upcoming year. That theme, you will find, will follow the growth of this community and this city, and try to, as best we can, present the spirit of inclusion. A couple of these folks here will be chairing various boards and committees. Some of you have been to the galas that we have. This year, we will be representing or looking at honoring some nonprofit organizations. Some of them will probably be churches. And incidentally, these will not be religious events. It will be events where we will honor institutions that have been the foundations of our community. And so Mayor, we look forward to the assistance of yourself and the rest of the Commissioners show up where you can. I will close by saying this, that black history is American history, and we still have hope and faith with the spirit of inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker?
Mary Phillips.
Mary Phillips, 384 Northwest 19th Street, Pompano Beach, Florida. Been a resident here for about 36 years. My daughter's birthday is on July 10, and that's when I moved here. Okay, I just want to say thank you, city, for supporting us through our education, crime, employment, and business forum. We had a great panel. They brought a lot of very good information for the community. I believe that we're intending to do a housing forum, and then we want to talk about all things associated with housing, including homelessness, including granny shacks or those people who can, want to add on to their homes for their extended families, et cetera, because nobody really knows what the rules and the criteria are. And the process of being able to add on to your home, you don't have to have a contractor to do it. You can actually do it yourself with the help of the city. I was able to add on to my house. I have a, now a four-bedroom, two-bath house with a family room and an additional bedroom in the rear of my house. And I did it with the help of the city staff without a contractor. Okay? And then the other thing is, people have been coming to me talking about title, and then there's all kind of talk about you're going to lose your house if something happens to you. I've been seeing it and reading it. So we want to have somebody on the panel to talk about trust as a, as a way of protecting generational wealth and what people have. So just look forward to that. Hopefully, we'll be able to partner with you guys on that, but because people have been coming to me and wanting this information, we are going to try to make every effort to provide that. And also for the affordable housing for those organizations or businesses who want to develop affordable housing, we're going to have somebody on the panel to talk about that. Thank you for your time. Bye-bye now.
Thank you. Next speaker?
David Hall.
Good afternoon. David Hall, 290 Southeast 8th Court. Couple of meetings ago, we had a discussion about decorum and how the citizens should act when they're addressing all of the Commission, not singling anyone out intentionally. And everyone has to comply with that, and I think that's absolutely appropriate. Conversely, I think, the Commission, and I know you don't interact with folks as they ask questions, as we just saw moments ago, but I think that it's incumbent upon the Commission to call out when people get up here and state things that are just blatantly false. You all know that there are infrastructure jobs being done in almost every district here, and when they do do a building like the Ritz that did not have carte blanche to build whatever it wants, infrastructure is taken into consideration. So I think it's incumbent upon all of you to say, "Hold on, that's not true." And also, when people come up and say, "We're riddled with debt." We have a tremendous credit rating, and that is reviewed every single year. We generate lots of revenue from the developments that we've done. The Ritz Carlton, the Waldorf Astoria, outside of the CRA but brought here because of what the CRA development did, is going to generate tens of millions of dollars in revenue for this city. Nobody ever wants to talk about the revenue that will be coming in. Sure, we're all riddled in debt. You buy a house, and you get a mortgage, you've got a ton of debt, but is this a smart thing to do? Of course it is. Why? Because over the last 20 years, you've made a tremendous amount in your house on a return on investment. Same thing will be happening in this city. Nobody likes to talk about the end of the sentence. Yes, there's debt to be brought on. Yes, there are things that you need to do. But at the end of the day, nobody talks about the revenue that's going to come in for it. So I think it's incumbent upon everyone to correct mistakes when they're made to people that get up here and talk about stuff that is partially true. The city attorney, I don't know if I'm allowed to address him directly, but I think did a very good job doing what he's supposed to do, to caution all of the Commissioners on what they're voting on and the ramifications and the repercussions, not only for the city, but themselves personally for their votes. So I commend you for doing that. May not have been popular, but it's the right thing to do. I'll give back 40 seconds to the citizens.
Very good. Thank you for that. Next speaker?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. If we're going to start correcting the record, I guess I'll start here. So...
No, sir.
So Mr. Hall always has an extremely bullish perspective, and what he said is true, that all this development has the potential to bring in massive amounts of revenue in our city, and we can keep, if we keep growing and there's no market corrections or anything, then, then, then that might be correct. But that's one set of assumptions and one world. There are different worlds, and we've all been through it, like the housing crash that happened here and around the country. And there are other things that happen that are exogenous shocks to the economy and to the city of Pompano Beach real estate market. So from interest rates, inflation, hurricanes, economic issues as a country. So there are other scenarios where that growth doesn't continue the same, and it becomes more difficult to pay our bills because the revenue base doesn't continue to grow at the same rate, or even might decline over time. So I just wanted to correct that. Thank you.
Very good. That ends the audience to be heard at this time. Any additional speakers will have to be heard at the end of the meeting. That takes us up to our consent agenda. Let's see, can I get a motion approving items one, five, and seven?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Item number two is a resolution.
Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing award of RFP 25-002 for the Public Art Master Plan to the highest-ranked bidder, Design Local Limited, in the amount of $80,000, and authorizing the proper city officials to execute the contract as provided in RFP 25-002, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. This item was pulled by Commissioner Fezick. Commissioner?
Yes, I just wanted to ask a few questions related to this request and related to the Public Art Master Plan. Do we currently, since we're in the middle of budget season, I guess with this being an additional $80,000, is there any ability to move this until after our budget workshop on the 14th? To move this agenda item?
Good afternoon. I'm Ty Taping, Director of the Cultural Affairs Department. So this is not funded from the general fund. There's designated revenue for the Public Art Committee, and it's funded from that. So it will have no impact on the general fund and the overall budget, given that it's funded separately.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions, concerns? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Yes, item three is a resolution.
Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a public transportation grant agreement between the City of Pompano Beach and the State of Florida Department of Transportation, accepting a grant the amount of $136,182 for the rehabilitation pavement construction of runway 1028 for the Pompano Beach Air Park, and confirming the city's matching contribution in an amount of $136,182, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. This item was pulled by Commissioner Fezick. Commissioner?
Yes, hi, thank you. I was wanting to just... I was wanting to just reach out to the community and just, just clear up this question. This is for work that has already been done or for work about to be done?
CIP Manager Tammy Good. This work has not been done yet. The design has been done, which was also funded by, by grants from FAA and FDOT, and this grant is one of two grants, first one being FDOT, second one will be forthcoming from FAA, and those two grants combined will fund the construction.
Okay.
Ninety-seven and a half percent.
Ninety-seven and a half percent. Okay. So I've received a lot of emails related to the runway expansion, related to air park usage. I know that we still have from earlier this year, there was a land use plan amendment that has gone to the county, but we've not finished, it'll come back to us in September. And on top of that, there were some environmental studies so that would, that would need to be done. I also understand that in planning and zoning, at their last meeting, that there was an air park component to the master plan. So is, is this grant agreement limited just to rehabilitation or resurfacing of the existing runway with no extensions or new construction?
Correct. Rehab in the existing runway and then modifying the taxiway, making it a little smaller so that it doesn't, causes less confusions for the pilots, so they know exactly where to taxiway onto the runway. So there's no expansion of the runway going to occur as part of this project.
And then the second question I have is just, are any areas impacted by that, those ESL designated, the environmentally sensitive lands affected?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. This is, this is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, what, Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. While we're talking about this, Ms. Good, when do you think, or Dr. Good, when do you think we will have the FAA grant money, and do we have to wait until we receive that money to get started on the resurfacing project?
That is correct. We are anticipating receiving those grants in August, and we've already put the construction project out to bid, received bids. We've not awarded it yet until we have the grants secured. So once we have both of these grants secured and approved by you all, we'll then bring back the construction contract for approval. So we're hoping to break ground maybe September, October, October more realistically, by the time we get permits.
And how long will the runway be closed for?
Nine months.
So it will be closed for nine months. What will that do to flight schools and the traffic on the other?
We have the other two runways, so it shouldn't, shouldn't impact.
But there will be pattern changes because this runway will be out of use. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson-Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harton?
Yes, item four is a resolution.
Resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a public transportation grant agreement between the City of Pompano Beach and the State of Florida Department of Transportation, accepting a grant the amount of $18,875 for corrective payment construction of a taxiway, of taxiway A for the Pompano Beach Air Park, and confirming the city's matching contribution in an amount of $18,875, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. This item was pulled by Commissioner Fezick. Commissioner?
Thank you. Yep, this one was me, too. So I wanted to just quickly ask, because of what Vice Mayor said on the previous item, the, the runways that are closed, could you please just explain where taxiway A would be so that residents would understand?
I'm going to let Steve answer that. I want to get it right. But just so you know, for the record, this is an accompanying grant. For whatever reason, FDOT separated the, the two grants into two separate, because of, they're, from them, it's coming from two separate pots of money. To us, we're treating it as one project, and it was designed as one. I'll let Steve answer that question.
Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Steve Rock, airport manager. Taxiway Alpha is the first taxiway to get onto runway 10.
Okay, thank you. And so this, these are then the same, part of the same project?
Yes.
And just for clarification, runway 1028 is the one that is going primarily east-west?
East-west.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson-Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harton?
Yes, item six is a resolution.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a funding agreement between the City of Pompano Beach and the Broward County Sheriff relating to participation in the 2022 Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. This item was pulled by Vice Mayor Fournier. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I want to understand if, how this grant differs from the Safe Neighborhood Grant that we considered back in December. Is there any match required from the city or any requirement to pay any fringe costs or anything associated with this grant?
Allison Fratato, Finance Director. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commission. No, there's no matching. This is the JAG program that we have been partnership with the federal government, and there's no city match on these grants.
Thank you very much.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson-Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harton?
Yes, that takes us up to our regular agenda. Item eight is discussion and consideration item for the annual performance evaluation for Mr. Gregory P. Harrison, City Manager. Ms. Sinogo, Sinagam, I'll turn it over to you to cue it up.
Lisa Sinago, Human Resources Director. This item is for the commission to review and discuss performance and any related merit pay which could be retroactive and awarded effective February 21 of 2025. All employees, including the four officials that report to the commission, have received a 3% cost of living adjustment on 10/1/24. Four officials have received either 3% or 5% merit increases in the past few years effective on their personal anniversary dates. The current pay for the city managers within the top 25th percentile of the 12 city regional comparison group, and the city manager has provided his accomplishments for your review. I'm available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you for that. I'll tell you what, I think Mr. Harrison has done a great job for our city for many years. He's gotten us where we're at through a lot of thick and thin, working with various commissions, and has gotten us to be really a star in the area as far as the city of Pompano Beach goes. Where people I talk to from around the county, from around the state, they say, man, you guys are really, really doing things right in Pompano. So I would make a motion, we go ahead and give Mr. Harrison a 3% raise, and the only reason I say 3% is, I just want to, you know, he's getting up towards the, setting the, setting the, the limit up there. So I would, I would make a motion for a 3% increase in pay.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and second for a 3% increase in pay. Now, before, before we go further, I just, let's see, I'll go ahead, let's see. Mr. Harrison, thank you for your list of accomplishments here as far as things that have been done in Pompano Beach. I appreciate that, and just, just so the public knows, I know oftentimes people just look at the agenda, paper agenda, they don't see the backup and stuff like that, but we've got six pages almost of, of things that have taken place in Pompano Beach. Great things that, I just want to recognize that. Also, we've got a list of city manager salaries from surrounding city managers. It's, it's well within the ranges of other communities, and that's, that's really what we want, to make sure that we're here. But now, I just want to read this so I don't mess this one up. Before I yield the floor, I feel it's necessary to address an issue that bears directly on this matter that has deeply concerned me, and I suspect many others. As someone who has served in elected office for over a decade, I've always held a profound respect for the processes that guide our work and the principles of collaboration and transparency that support our system of local governance. Our city charter is clear. Authority is not vested in individual commissioners, but in the city commission as a whole. We act together or we don't act at all. With that in mind, I've got to express my disappointment in the recent actions of one of, one of our commissioners who, without the consent or direction of this body, initiated a conversation with the city manager requesting his resignation. That was done without a vote, without a formal discussion, and without the knowledge of the rest of the commission. This is not a matter of opinion or personality, it's a matter of process and principle. While every commissioner is entitled to their views and concerns about city leadership, no individual member has the authority to act unilaterally on behalf of the entire body. Doing so not only oversteps the bounds of your role, but also undermines the collective decision-making that our residents rightly expect from us. That was not a misunderstanding, it was a serious breach of protocol, one I've never witnessed in all my years of public service. I'm not raising this to embarrass anyone, but to reaffirm the standards we must uphold. We owe it to each other, to our city staff, and most importantly, to our constituents, to follow proper process, even when we feel urgency or passion around an issue. That's how we maintain trust, transparency, and accountability in this chamber. I hope we can move forward with a renewed commitment to working together within the structure that governs us. We're strongest when we act as one body, even when we disagree, especially when we disagree. Thank you. Further, further commission discussion on the motion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have many things I need to cover here. First, I want to take a moment to address how we got here today instead of doing a performance review two weeks ago like we were supposed to. The reason I requested to move Mr. Harrison's review at our last meeting was to simply give us more time to talk about details of Mr. Harrison's agreed-upon retirement. On June 23rd, in my regular one-on-one meeting before a commission meeting, I went to Mr. Harrison to express the concerns I had about one agenda item, his performance review. I asked if he'd ever thought about retiring, and maybe working as a consultant or doing something else, and moving on to help start the transition in our city to different leadership and heal some of the division here in Pompano Beach. Mr. Harrison actually thanked me for coming to him and having the conversation. After having the conversation, I asked him, or during it, if there was any reason he was staying, if there were certain projects or what it was that motivated him. He told me it was personal financial motives. To, to be clear, he had no care for the city, the employees, or the people here.
Ladies and gentlemen...
He thanked me for coming to him and said, yes, it makes sense, I will call you tomorrow. The next day, June 24th, before our commission meeting, Mr. Harrison called me to reiterate that he had decided to retire and said he was working on a draft of a consulting agreement. I even received calls from other people thanking me for talking to him before I came to the meeting on the 24th and called for a vote of no confidence. That is my job, to speak with the city manager. I am one of his bosses, and I have the right to tell him, I'm going, this is what's going to happen tomorrow. Given this, I graciously postponed the item because he said, I'm, I'm going to retire. Subsequently, Mr. Harrison reneged in an email, a ridiculous email he sent to the entire commission, and I'd like to remind my fellow commissioners about sunshine laws, because a couple of you who've sat in these chairs for long enough, Commissioner Sigerson-Eaton and Commissioner, and Mayor Rex Harton, should not be replying to all with your thoughts about something we are going to vote on. You've, violation of sunshine laws by replying to all on that. So I want to be clear today, I have a completely clear conscience, I kept my word, but Mr. Harrison can thank the people who changed his mind, the same people who've probably had a stranglehold on our city for years for today. And Mr. Harrison, you can look in the mirror every day knowing your word is absolutely worthless. So with that, let's turn to your actual performance. I reviewed your list of accomplishments also.
Mayor?
It is, I am your boss, and I am speaking.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor? I'm, I'm Vice Mayor? I'm gonna, I'm gonna, ladies and gentlemen, please. Vice Mayor, I'm gonna ask you to refrain from personal attacks to anybody.
We are doing a review of somebody. How is that not?
That, that, that is exactly what we're doing, and so that does not include personal attacks.
When the person you're reviewing is a serial liar? Perhaps it does. With that, let's turn to your performance. I have reviewed the list of accomplishments as well. It is five pages of appropriating other people's hard work. You led Operation Trigger Lock. I am guessing the sheriff would disagree with that.
Vice Mayor, once, Vice Mayor?
I'm reading his list of accomplishments.
Vice Mayor, once again, I'm, I am going to ask you to refrain from personal attacks.
I'm reading his list of accomplishments. Monitor and protecting over 500...
Characterizing his list of accomplishment as appropriating somebody else's work is inappropriate. He's the city manager.
Monitoring and protecting.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, no applause.
Monitoring and protecting 500 sea turtle nests, redesigning Dixie Highway fencing to prevent bright line fatalities. I could go on, but I won't. Instead, I'm going to read a list of things that are actually specific to the performance of the city manager, and I'm going to quote Rod Phillips, "Sometimes the truth hurts." We have neglected basic infrastructure like paving our neighborhood roads for years. There's been mismanagement of the Southeast Sixth Terrace Bridge, including wasting years and at least a million dollars, still no results for the residents on this. We lost a $500 contribution from Fort Lauderdale towards a four-foot higher McNabb Bridge. There's a bait and switch going on at the pump. Where is the Crystal Lagoon, the entertainment district, the hotel, the flagship Publix? Under your watch this last year, it has become an incitely industrial park with a full-scale Costco on the way. There was a rush to start the unpopular Atlantic-Dixie work by you without the required FEC approvals, and then you misled this body about it. Who knows when we'll finish that project because of that failure?
Let, let, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, once...
I was reading what's happened in the last year.
Vice Mayor, once again, I'm going to ask you to refrain from personal attacks, characterizing, misleading the commission is out of bounds. Thank you.
He looked at you when you said you wouldn't start this without approvals and said, absolutely not, Mayor, and then we've received a memo that was in complete disagreement with that. So if anyone should actually feel upset about that, it's you.
Vice Mayor, please.
Routinely listen to consultants whose profits and plans are more important than the people. Created and mismanaged a traffic disaster in our city on Atlantic at Cypress and Dixie, negatively impacting residents, business owners, and neighborhoods. Ignored technology, neglected areas like vehicle fleet management, wasting taxpayers millions of dollars. Allowed an imminent parking crisis to develop at our beach, creating inconvenience for residents and potential severe economic impacts to businesses in the future. Latently misled me about our procurement ordinance change that gave you $200,000 of spending authority and then liberally used that authority to make uncompetitive sweetheart deals with chosen people. Overlooked the illegal purchase, millions of dollars of fire trucks.
Vice Mayor, I'm gonna, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm gonna ask you, once again, refrain from personal attacks and inferring that things are being done illegally? I appreciate that. Unless you've got evidence to take to the proper authorities, don't bring it up.
Overlooked the purchase of fire trucks against our purchasing ordinance and then supported a plan to cover it up. I have the emails. Lost your fight with the sheriff about who heads our police department, and year after year neglected the increase in BSO deputies that we apparently needed because we've now been told that there's a 27% increase, some due to salaries and some due to adding deputies that we have not been adding over the years, even though our city was growing. Didn't answer, well, you don't like the word lies, we'll go, didn't answer honestly about the failed Lauderdale-by-the-sea Fire Department contract when I asked at the budget session last year. That was costing taxpayers millions of dollars.
So you're...
Neglected the McNabb House ISOR, allowing it, I'm, I'm reading my review. Is this not a performance review?
Vice Mayor, I'm gonna ask you, once again, refrain from personal attacks, inferring that he misled you? Okay, unless you've got evidence?
I, I do, I, I have the evidence of what it was costing us, and I have the transcript from the budget session. Neglected the McNabb House ISOR, allowing it to sit vacant for five years, and as a result, turned a city park into a homeless encampment. Supported consultants who routinely misdesigned and mismanaged projects like field sizes at U Sports Complex, the parking lot at the senior center, Atlantic and Dixie, all of this costing the taxpayers millions of dollars. Oversaw a budget that has ballooned 83% and a debt increase of 425%. Worked 160 days last year, that's an average of three days a year, making over $2,400 a day. Exacerbated division in the city, in particular with the black community that has been left behind under your watch. Specifically, you are responsible for a complete failure on the downtown project, allowing an unfavorable deal for the people, forcing a lopsided land swap with the county that committed the people to tens of millions of dollars of future obligations in parking garages, and engaging in a year-long failed strategy that relied on personal.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I've just gotta correct the record here, I'm sorry. He's not responsible for the downtown. That actually was approved by the city commission, and he is enacting the policies of the city commission going forward. Now, you may not like those policies, as you don't some things, and we get that, but he's doing his job. Thank you.
If you read his five pages of major accomplishments, he took credit for things.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, trust me, we, I appreciate your sentiments, but we don't need the applause.
His accomplishments included things done by businesses, nonprofits, and not just the city. So if you're gonna take credit for everything, you're gonna take the blame for the stuff that happened on your watch, too. Engaged in a year-long failed strategy on the downtown that relied on personal disparagement of sitting commissioners, your bosses.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm gonna have, Vice Mayor, I'm gonna have to ask you, once again, to refrain from personal attacks. When somebody is carrying out the orders of the city commission, they're carrying out the orders of the city commission. You may not like those orders because you don't like it. Well, that's too bad if he's doing his job, so please, if you don't like it, I get it, but that's not his responsibility.
Could you please stop interrupting me? I don't believe this commission hired him.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'll tell you what, I will interrupt you every single time I need to, to correct the record and ask you, and ask you to stay to the facts. Thank you. Go ahead. You've got the floor.
I don't believe this commission authorized or voted on a strategy of hiring consultants to personally disparage sitting commissioners. Promoted the downtown through propaganda full of lies and inaccuracies.
What? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Promoted the downtown through propaganda and full of lies and inaccuracies. That was proven at the May 14th meeting when we held up everything that was beginning out in the lobby that was full of inaccuracies.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to produce the evidence of lies in the information that was spent out by the city.
Happy to do it.
Okay, good.
I'll have Curvin send it to you later. I'll send it to him. City manager has created an unworkable mess here on the downtown, a failure of real community engagement, supporting the uninspiring vision of moving City Hall and just that, and using consultants who were hired without a documented process to engage in a pressure campaign using slander and disrespect against commissioners. Routinely supporting consultants who breached the conduct clause in their contract. I will continue to fight for a downtown that makes sense because the black community has been ignored for so long under this city manager. The city manager has funneled their money through the Northwest CRA, out of their neighborhoods and into other projects. Follow the money.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to interrupt again. You need to stick with accuracies. The city manager does the budgeting, we approve the budget, he follows the budget. Unless you've got some evidence of illegality, that's absolutely inaccurate. Vice Mayor.
I don't think a performance review has to do with legality, it has to do with my view of performance.
Yes, Vice Mayor, it certainly has to do with accuracy, and obviously, you are inaccurate. Now, if you want to continue, if you, if you want to continue with that, it just shows to your character.
How many local black landowners received rent for vacant buildings? How many local black consultants were hired before the downtown, before they were needed by the city manager to do his work? My review of your performance is you have lied to us over and over. You have made bad deals. You have wastefully spent taxpayer dollars. Your communication is poor. You've ignored the people, you've disrespected your bosses, and you've allowed outsiders with their own agenda to have too much influence over our city. I believe you are also in breach of your contract clause that requires residency in the city of Pompano Beach. You vote in Texas, you clearly meet the requirements to homestead your house in Texas, meaning you proved to the state of Texas that you were a resident there. I will be seeking an opinion from the attorney general about where you reside, and let me remind you, this is why the city manager in Fort Lauderdale resides.
And let me, let me remind, let me remind the Vice Mayor to please stick to accuracies. Your beliefs are your beliefs.
What is that, where's there a belief there?
You're claiming he's not a resident of the city of Pompano Beach. You're claiming that. He lives, he's, he's got a residence in the city of Pompano Beach. So until you get your city, your state attorney's opinion, you're wrong.
It's not homesteaded, and he votes in another state, and I'm going to ask the attorney general what their views are.
That's fine, that's fine. When the attorney general verifies your belief, then you can come back and state that. Understand?
I will never consider a raise for you, any other deal between you and the city. I might not have the votes today, but from this day forward, you will know what I think of your performance. It is below my expectations. For what we spend, the people of Pompano deserve an engaged, thoughtful, proactive, respectful, and independent leader. That is not you. On the city's evaluation form, your performance is a one, unsatisfactory. The employee's work performance is inadequate and definitely inferior to the standards of performance required for the job. According to your city form, performance at this level cannot be allowed to continue. I would like to make a motion to call for a vote of no confidence in the leadership. I understand the motion on the table.
We have a motion on the table already.
As soon as your motion is over, I will be making a motion.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
I will be making a motion to vote for no confidence in the leadership of Gregory Harrison today.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, ladies and gentlemen, we don't need the applause. Appreciate it, thank you.
That's my performance review.
Very good. Let's go ahead and open this up to the public. This is a public hearing. Please, any input from the public? Please come forward, just give your name and address for the record.
Mayor, did we?
My name is David. I live on 520 North Ocean Boulevard. I came to Pompano Beach in 1995. I visited Pompano Beach because my ex and I used to own a Pompano Beach club. It was pretty sleepy town, and I came back again in 2010. I bought a couple condos, now own five properties. The reason I did that because I see the leadership of city Pompano have done great job. Basically, what I hear from you, Vice Mayor, a couple points I write down. You are very unprofessional. You have personal attack, finger pointing, wrong accusement without the facts, obsession, obsession, obsession. I don't know what's wrong with you. You are miserable human being. Well, I recommend you, you need to see a therapy. Thank you.
What happened to decorum?
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen.
Singling us out, insulting us.
Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna ask you to please refer, refrain from personal insults and abusive comments towards any on the commission. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, go ahead. Very good. Go ahead. Please just name and address for the record.
Sure. Tom DeGiorgio, 24 Northeast, 24th Avenue. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Members of this commission. I want to read this tonight, which I very rarely do, but I think it's important. It's both an honor and a duty to address you this evening to support a leader whose steady hand and visionary approach have been instrumental in remarkable transformation of our city. I like the mayor to travel outside our city often. I hear all the accolades being said about us, and that's a direct reflection on our leadership. Over the past 10 years, Pompano Beach has not merely changed, it has flourished. Today, we stand proudly as a city known for innovation, sustainability, economic vitality, and an exceptional quality of life. This transformation has been intentional. It has been strategic, and most of all, it has been led by a city manager whose unwavering commitment to public service, collaboration, and excellence has set a new standard in municipal governance. Mr. Harrison is entrusted, as you said, Mayor, to execute your vision. Under his stewardship, that vision has not only come to life, it has been awarded, celebrated, and modeled by cities across the region. Mr. Harrison is entrusted to execute your vision. In 2021, Greg Harrison was named Public Administrator of the Year by the American Society of Public Administration. A prestigious award, yes, but one that simply affirmed what we already knew, that he leads with integrity, intelligence, and intention. Under Greg's guidance, our utilities department has become one of the most decorated in the state of Florida, utility year multiple times. Just about every department has been recognized with state and national awards. Under Mr. Harrison's leadership, Pompano Beach has launched the most ambitious redevelopment effort in our city's history, a $2 billion transformation of our downtown core in partnership with Roca Partners. Just as transformative as the award-winning McNabb House and Botanical Gardens, which received the Florida Redevelopment Association Out of the Box Award. And we've grown, as we've grown economically, we've also grown as a community. TripAdvisor's Traveler's Choice Award for 2024, '23, '22, and '21, top 10% destinations worldwide. Excellence in sports tourism, sustainability award, 14 different EPA environmental awards over the last five years. None of these accomplishments would be possible without teamwork. Greg Harrison has built a culture that empowers city staff, collaborates with the commission, and listens to our residents. Mayor Harden, Commissioner, residents here today. This is not just a list of accolades, this is a legacy, a legacy of motion, a legacy built by a man who has led quietly but powerfully, who has worked tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure that our city shines in the spotlight. Greg, I want to thank you. Pompano Beach is proud of you, we're better off because of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
My name is Dennis McDonald, 1401 North Riverside Drive here in Pompano. I am here to support Greg Harrison. I've known Greg since 2015. I was one of the original artists that was working on the Shipwreck Park projects. He was a vice mayor at the time. Came up to Stewart to see the work we were doing up there. We were doing a similar reef project. I didn't know him, he came up with his daughter, Madison, and immediately I could tell he was a guy, a man of integrity and a guy that knew how to get stuff done. I've known him for 10 years now. Greg Harrison is not the man that Vice Mayor just spoke about. My heart's pounding because of that. I know this guy, I've worked with this guy, I've seen him in action, I've seen the way that the city people that I work with, I'm the president of my condo, so I have a lot of input, I mean, I have a lot of interaction with city employees, and they love this guy. I'm sorry. That, I don't know where you're getting that, Vice Mayor. You're entitled to your opinion, but you are totally off-base on that. I totally support this guy. We would not be in the position we are in this city right now if this guy was not at the helm. Look at, look at every, every meeting I go to, every meeting I see, look at the accolades that pour out for the city, the things we're doing. Everything is because the leadership and the culture is what's been developed, and this man right here is the head of it. I'm sorry, but I can't buy your rap at all. Greg Harrison is doing a great job, and you may not like all the decisions that are being made, but the man that you just described is not the man that I have known for the last 10 years. Thank you.
Very good.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Childery. I live in Pompano Beach in Palmeir. I used to manage the condominium that Greg lives in, I'm not gonna say the address. However, he never took shortcuts. He never asked for anything special. He is nothing, what she said. My daughter, Taylor Childery, she has a degree in emergency management. She did her internship at the city of Pompano Beach. I asked Greg, when she was going to UCF, if there was any possible way that she can come to the city and intern. He does care about the kids. He cares about the people in the city. He does a lot for us, and he is such an asset to this community. So everything you said that he doesn't care, he does care. He truly, truly cares. And for that, I wish he doesn't, you know, you do not let him go. He is an asset, a very, very valuable asset, who cares about this community and the kids and the people. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Jeff Terode, 101 North Riverside Drive, Pompano Beach. You might know me as Shipwreck Park, South Florida Diving. I do all your cameras for you. As a matter of fact, I gotta go out this afternoon and clear one of them out. Without all of that, without this man right here, we wouldn't be there in the diving industry. Believe me, he put us on the map years ago when we dropped Lady Luck, which is, the anniversary's coming up on July 23rd, nine years, can you believe that? Since then, we've dropped Okinawa, another shipwreck, and most recently is the Wahoo Bay Project for kids, handicapped folks. Greg was instrumental in that. I mean, he is Mr. Tourism for us. So I pray to God that you keep him on, keep him going, because he is the light in the city. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next speaker. Please come forward.
Sure. You didn't answer quick enough. Skversky, 1630 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Pompano Beach, Florida. I'm gonna get everybody to hate me, but then again, I don't care. I don't like politicians, and you've all turned into politicians, every single one of you. I think you're a good guy. There's nothing wrong with you. Your, the amount that you're getting paid is a problem. It's well over $400,000 with benefits. Am I correct? You're in the high threes, correct? Plus benefits.
Go ahead, Mr. Skversky. Rest the chair.
The paper will, will back me up on that if they want to in the future. I think that's absurd to pay any city manager across the country that amount of money. It's just too much. Like I said before, we could find somebody local that has their house homesteaded, that lives in Pompano Beach, that is qualified at half the price, period. I've said that before, and I stand by it because I know somebody that lives in Cypress Harbor that would be a tremendous candidate, and he already told me what he would work for. So you're dealing, like I said, cut the salary in half, and you got another hiry. I do think you should retire, but I'm not gonna be mean to you. And like I said, I like everybody to despise me. So in closing, when I was a kid, and all of you, just listen to this, when I was a kid, if I talked to elders a specific way that my dad didn't like, he beat the you-know-what out of me. He beat the SH you-know-what out of me. I stopped with, okay? Now, if my sister would have done that, she would have gotten soap shoved down her throat. Okay? So I understand you do not appreciate the city manager, you want him gone. I've stated I agree, but let's be somewhat normal when we talk about this, all right? I could go over the list. I read the backup, and I kind of found a lot of the stuff kind of intriguing and interesting. But like I said, act normal. If you were my kid, you'd get soap down your throat.
Very good. Next speaker.
Hunter King, Pompano Beach. I think Mr. Harrison is a great city manager for everything east of Dixie. The northwest side of Pompano has struggled for as long as I can remember. Commissioner Perkins has been to this commission and mentioned to this dais on many occasions the things that we need in our community, and I don't think it's right that she has to beg him for the things that we need, that her constituents need in this community. And yes, I know the project has come in, the MLK Downtown project has come in, but what about all the things we've needed prior to this project? That project is only gonna be on one or two streets. And I even got in the car and drove around with him to show him a lot of the needs that we need for our community, and some of those things that I driven to show him some three, four years ago are still in the same condition. A lot of our crime things that we complain about, I can let each one of you drive into northwest and show you some of our struggles that have been our struggles for so many years. And yes, some things have been taken care of, but it's taken years. How many times did we come to beg to take care of the problem on 15th Street? Something small. Now, there's many big problems. And it took us almost four years before something was done that should have been done five, six years ago. We begged for a traffic light for so many people lost their lives in accidents. Five, I know at least five, six years, we've talked about it, and it's still not up today. Our schools, we've talked about our schools so many times. I've been up here 50 times to talk about things with our schools. That's on him. You said, well, it's on the school board. Well, it's on him to contact the school board to make things right for our students so that they're not in schools in the deplorable conditions because we pay taxes. And I feel that the northwest has been overlooked. Nobody hears our cries. Martin Luther King once said, "When you hear writing and outcry, it is the voice, the cries of the, the voice of the unheard." And we've been unheard on many things, and it's a lot of money that has come through this city that has not properly come to the northwest as it should so that we can feel safe, so that my mom can sit on her garage and do a crossword puzzle without people coming and begging her money, so that the unhoused aren't sleeping at my business every single day. It's gotten better, but it took us four or five years to get better. And so we live with a lot in the northwest, and I think that that's on Mr. Harrison that a lot of those problems are not resolved. a lot of those problems are not resolved. So, I think he's doing a great job for the east side, but the northwest really needs a real city manager. Thank you.
Very good. Next speaker.
David Hall, same address as a few moments ago. We're talking about the northwest CRA in conjunction with what Greg has done, and the northwest and the, and that district has been ignored for way longer than Mr. Harrison has been here. I say it all the time. We need to develop Pompano from the north to the south, the east and the west. For every ounce, every area, square inch of this city should be developed, all for the betterment of all of the people in this city. So, to dump the problems that have been generational in that area for someone who's been here for a decade is a little unfair. How much money, since he's been here, has been spent in the northwest section as compared to any other time period prior? Millions upon millions. How much of that development is going to generate tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars in revenue for that area as well as the rest of the city? How much services are taken by that area, BSO, fire, code, for that area that this project will help alleviate, because the rest of the city is subsidizing all of the issues that have far too long sadly plagued that area? It's unconscionable that folks have have to live in that style for as long as they've had. It's, it's sickening. We're talking about giving a man a raise who has, I don't know, how much money in grants and free money, that a couple of commissioners voted 12 million bucks down for the Dixie Corridor just this year. That's free money. How much has this man brought into the city that has helped the taxpayers of Pompano Beach? And then you talk about what you brought up, Mayor, and what you addressed, Vice Mayor. If any one of you even remotely agree with Vice Mayor about his performance, and let's say for argument's sake, just for schnitz and giggles, she's right. Why would you then want to negotiate with someone to offer them a buyout that would be six or seven figures to buy them out of the city? Why would you then, after railing against the use of consultants, meeting after meeting, and we're not doing it right, offer him a consultant's position? Why would you rail against being able to sign contracts over a certain threshold and that going up, but then negotiate for a six or seven-figure buyout on your own? Any one of you would not do that. You shouldn't do that. You are his boss, but we're your boss, all of you. How dare anyone negotiate a six or seven-figure buyout in a consultancy position for a man? Because if you think you're going to buy out someone who makes that kind of money for 25, 30 grand, that's a joke. You know it's six or seven figures. And for anyone else who wants to take the job at half the price, that's a 24/7/365 job, I don't want anyone on the cheap. You better pay someone who knows what they're doing, and clearly Tommy DiGiorgio knows a lot about this city, this county and developing. If that guy says it, nobody knows better. This guy's done a remarkable job, and I think you guys should give him more than the 3%, but I get what you meant.
Further input from the public? Seeing none? Public input closed. Very good. Commission discussion. See, we've got Commissioner Fessick.
Thank you. So, just to be clear, we are, this is related to the motion on the table for the 3% raise, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Nego, could you, you mentioned in your, in your opening statement that it would be retroactive if we were to give the city manager a raise. Could you let us know what, what date that would be retroactive to and what that would, so I can do the math backwards, please?
That would be February, February 21, 2025. That's the anniversary date of the promotion to city manager is the February 21.
Okay.
And that would be for the annual, for the 12-month period.
Just check the math real quick, how many weeks that would be? So, roughly 11 weeks?
If you counted, sure.
I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure with the time, with the timeframes. And the only reason why I wanted to do this is because, 11, right? Simple math, yes. Thank you, Ms. Commissioner. That'd be, so, and you said it would be a lump sum, correct? So, that would be a lump sum of $167,383.77, whatever, somewhere around there. I bring that up only because, and I'm not going to disrespect anybody, right now, I, this is about the 3%, we are in the middle of budget season, and it has come to my attention that we have fired some employees, some longstanding employees, or asked them to step down. And so, 160-something thousand dollars could actually save at least one employee that we know has done a great job, at least one, maybe more. And in addition to that, one of these employees that was asked to step down is very close to his retirement, and by doing so and retiring early would lose some of his vested interests. So, and healthcare for him and his wife. And I'm sure there's more stories about that, that I haven't heard all of the details yet, because I'm still waiting for the information. I did not know that this was happening. So, I'm looking at 160-something, $7,000, and I will not support the motion, because I would much rather that go to the exemplary staff that we have when we are in a growing city, and we are facing a budget that is $30 million less than we are operating with from the previous year, and we have requests on top of that for over $30 million, which they have, our staff has done an amazing job trying to fit as much as they can and to shove it into that budget, which we're going to still be working on. So, for right now, since everybody else is taking hits and taking cuts, I'm going to have to vote no to that motion, because I feel that we could be spending that 160-something thousand dollars to maintain some employees that are absolutely valuable to us running as a city. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? I got Commissioner Segerson Eaton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I've lived in the city since 1989 and participated with the redevelopment, sitting on the CRA advisory board way back when, when there was nothing on the beachside. And the progress that this city has made is phenomenal by every measure. We go up to Tallahassee, we hear it from other cities, our sister cities are very, very impressed. You don't get there with a disgruntled bunch of employees. You don't get to where we are with, without employees that are willing to go the extra mile, that are willing to burn the midnight oil for the betterment of this city. And that's what our employees have done. That is why this city has been so successful throughout the area. You don't get employees like that without a good leader. You don't get good employees who stick around when you don't let them do their job, when you micromanage every single thing that they do. That's not, that's not a good leader. A good leader lets its employees use their imagination, think outside of the box, have a positive attitude, and solve problems. That is what has made this city great. The employees and the staff that we have is phenomenal. The city manager is phenomenal. When I got elected in 2018, I was thrilled with the direction our city is going, and I became part of a team. I didn't get elected to tear apart this city and second-guess every decision that management is making, or every single budget issue, or CRA issue. No, I became part of the team. None of us in this room are perfect. We're human. Do we make mistakes? Yes. That's why we're human. Are things done purposefully? No. This city and this staff and this manager have so much to be proud of. So, the, and I agree with you, Mayor, on so much of what you said. There are so many, and others who have said, there are so many inaccuracies that have just been spewed about. The GO bond, which Mr. Harrison successfully got his staff to lead, and we got, the northwest community received over $75 million of improvements between the parks, fire stations, streetscapes, et cetera, et cetera, just from the GO bond, the general obligation bond, which two-thirds, two out of three people voted in favor of, especially the, the beachside. They came out in favor because they knew that what we need to do is improve the west side of Dixie, and maybe everything east or west of federal. So, that, that, that district, the commissioner did not vote in favor of that general obligation bond that has brought so much. And so, being on this commission since 2018, it's, it's been a very, for me, very proud. There's an incredible amount of details and work and reading and time and effort that we put into it, but I'm proud to do it, because I believe in this city, and we have a city manager that is a pleasure to work with. And in my opinion, the results of staff works demonstrates that he is doing a good job. And as we get picked apart and picked apart, finally, the city is moving towards a new downtown, a renaissance for the northwest community. Finally, can we, can, can, can we be happy that we're getting, is it, that we're getting, I guess we, I guess we just cannot please everyone, but I would say that overall, by all estimates, this city has done a phenomenal job, and I know will continue to do a phenomenal job. And, and I, and I love the, you know, the little commentary I get and the yawning and the, the this and the that, and, and the lack of, of, of respect from people who demand it constantly. But I will say, just getting back to Mr. Harrison, he's phenomenal, and the success of this city is because of him. So, that's my, that's my opinion, and I just wanted to add one additional thing. It's like, yeah, we're all elected, and to think that one commissioner, although she has a right to her own opinion, can act on behalf of the rest of us is really, really beyond the pale, I would say. And, and I feel like it's all about control. She can't control the city manager, because she's only one vote, and we have a, a panel here that the majority decides our direction. So, I don't like the fact that she, my opinion is that she wants to be able to control.
Commissioner, let's, let's keep personalities out of it.
All right. Well, his performance, I think I've pretty much said it all, and I love the, the smiles and the smirks and the, you know, whatever. That's my opinion, and I, and I have a right to it. So, I, maybe I should continue. Let's talk more about Greg and his accomplishments. Didn't he get an award from the Broward County City Managers Association? Can you clarify, clarify that for me, Greg?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and that is from a body of his peers? Did you also get a state recognition? Or some other?
Oh, there was a regional recognition with the Society of Public Administration.
Wonderful. Judgment by a body of his peers. So, I support a 3% raise, and I will not support removing the city manager. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to say that I went through the evaluation and some of the points that I wanted to bring up to Mr. Harrison. When I was elected, one of the first things that you did was you laid out the groundwork of, direct to me on the, the way that everything works, and you and I established an email relationship. When I hear issues from community, which there's been a lot of them, I email them to you, and you, your staff and you work so well together. You send them to the correct people, and within days, sometimes within hours, I have a response, and the residents has a response. And we've been able to solve a lot of issues in District 5 for those people that go through me to report issues. Every Monday before the city commission meeting, I have a standing appointment with you. I get my agenda, and immediately I start going through it, and I study until everything's done, and then I email you my questions. I try to get them done before the end of day Thursdays, because, because your staff has Friday off, but without fail, every Monday morning, I have answers to my questions. So, to come to the meeting, I'm prepared, thanks to you and your staff. I have all of my questions answered, and we've been able to solve a lot of issues within District 5 because of you. I also find that every time I ask anything financial, you're spot-on. When we have discussions in a group, you're innovative, you're smart, think outside the box, and you have solutions, and I appreciate that. And without fail, that's how my communications have been with you. Some of the accomplishments, somebody mentioned about getting grants through Mr. Harrison's leadership. This last year, we have $5.2 million in grants. We have $85 million utility bond, bond funding. We got the water taxi returned. I'm not saying he was out there doing it, but he's in his leadership, and that's what we have him for, is his leadership. We've, we found out, we confirmed a whole city knows that we have no lead in our pipes because of the projects that have been done under your leadership. We've acquired the properties to begin the new town, downtown development. We've got additional cameras, license plate readers. We're doing some great research on gunshot detections through the crime center because of your leadership. We cleaned the streets. We've planned, and we've done a lot of great development, and financially, we're in much better shape today than we were a year ago because of your leadership, and especially over the last 10 years, and I appreciate you. And I'm voting for the 3%.
I'm sorry, what?
I have every right to do it. Um, are you, is she done?
I'm, I'm not sure yet. Commissioner Smith, you still have the floor.
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Further, further commission discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes. Commissioner Perkins.
So, to the HR Director, how much are we paying the city manager and the CRA Director? Total amount, how much is he getting paid annually?
A total altogether, because the CRA is a portion, is $385,053, I believe.
Can you speak into the mic? You said 385?
And that is both of those responsibilities.
Okay, and today, we're asking for increase of approximately $15,000.
There's not an ask of any type of increase. That is up to the commission.
Yes, I understand that. The range of $15,000.
If you're asking what the 3%, which I believe is what is on there, I'll just get the exact for you. 11,551 is what 3% is.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I, first of all, Mayor. First of all, Mayor, when I speak, I don't need you yelling because it's something I might say that you don't like or disagree with. But I have to speak on behalf of what I know and what I've experienced. Now, you're the one that came up with these rules here about the rules of conduct for this meeting, and I expect you to act accordingly. I agree with pretty much everybody that came up and spoke about the city manager. And I think everybody's experience with the city manager is different. I totally agree when the gentleman over here, I think it was somebody, walked up and said how well and how nice he's been to them, because I've seen that in Greg. I personally think that Greg is a nice guy, but where do I start? So everybody knows that, I've been sitting on this dais for almost 10 years, and the mayor has been here a little over 20. And a lot of you know that since I've been here, I've been hammering on Greg about things I need in the Northwest, or things that the community need in the Northwest. And that's it for me. My job is just to make it easier for those people that live in the Northwest because it's the community that's lacking the most. That's my job, and that's what I've been saying to Mr. Harrison from day one. So Mr. Harrison has not been responsive to me in a lot of issues. I've been talking about the same issues for several years. Same issues. It's given me them, it's like you don't care unless it's important to you, Greg. And I'm going on based on what you've given me and how you've presented it to me and how we work together. You've fallen short when it comes to the Northwest. A gentleman walked up and said that he can't fix it overnight. Well, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. I have about eight or nine projects out there that are funded. And I've been waiting three, four, five years. Still waiting those projects to just start. That's it, just start. That's it. So a lot of this fighting and fighting that you see up here on the dais, I think a lot of it has to do with our city manager. When these two young ladies started, they started out like I did when I was elected in 2016. I started researching and gathering and trying to get information to put things together so I could be better prepared on this dais. But I was getting a drawback. Wasn't getting it from staff and city manager, and it just frustrated me. So I left the research part alone and moved on to just my district. So here, these two ladies, they're starting out, and they're doing the same thing. Good luck. I've been there. They're not getting the information. I have seen Greg Harrison, I know he has a good heart. I know he's a good man. But for me, this is about business. And business is my community. A lot of you are talking about the Northwest, but I guarantee you, a lot of you won't move into it.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, let the commissioner speak. Thank you.
So I've been seeing the infighting, staff battling and competing with commissioners, staff battling with the residents. And believe me, this is not about Beverly Perkins' feelings. It's not. But it's been chaos and confusion up here. We received respectfully now, we received, I think all of us, I know I did, a letter from a prominent pastor in this community stating to us he did not like what he saw on this dais and the way it looks on TV. And I agree with every single thing he had to say. And I received it. I know that in order for it to stop, excuse me, Greg would have to make a change, be removed. I don't know which one it is, but the way it's going, it's not working. Now, all of a sudden, there's confusion on the dais. And I want you all to know now, for 10 years, I sat up here on this dais and got my butt whipped every meeting because I was standing up for issues and things that we needed in the Northwest. And I took those whippings and beatings all by myself up here, and it was okay. You know why? Because you all had the votes up here. So it was fine. It was like Beverly always lost out, so whatever she had to do for her district, I got it, but behind the scenes. So we need to move in a direction of this city on behalf of everybody. And I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again. I have to talk to, communicate with, and deal with people every day I do not like and they do not like me. But for the sake of my job, I have to do the right thing and stay focused. So I'm not going to treat one way and another person another way. If you come to me to help you, and I know you need the help, and I know you don't like me, I'm going to try to help you because I know it's the right thing to do. But I think what bothers me the most with Greg is that I came up with an idea of how to help the Northwest community. And Greg, you remember when I brought to you the professional consultant, Dr. Wilhelmina Mack, into the Northwest and met with the people and everything? And this is what can change the whole Northwest that was put together in 2018. Okay? And nothing, nothing. This was not important to the city manager. Everything we need to fix the Northwest is here. It's right here. It's been here since 2018. But it's not important to him. But it's important to the people. So I was a little taken back when we was told about the fire truck. Millions of dollars were spent on equipment, and it was not brought to the commissioners. This city manager allowed the fire chief to retire because of his wrongdoings. And Greg Harrison never took responsibility for it.
That's not right.
So I just think that this is... To have a city manager that have two titles. He's our city manager, and he's Executive Director of CRA. For me, that's a conflict of interest. I know there are some intelligent people out there that can run one of those departments, and we can have Greg focus on just one. Let me give you an example. I asked Greg Harrison, when this young lady kept coming up to the podium, discrediting the commissioners or the elected officials, I asked Mr. Harrison, does she work for you or the city, for CRA? And Greg's answer was no. The next morning, I wake up, I get an email, Greg said yes. Because he have no idea who's working for him, it's so big, he doesn't know who's working for him. I know there's a lot of people work for you, but some people stand out, and you'll remember them, of course. So I remember when we purchased the house behind the Blantilly Museum. I think it was $317,000, something like that. The house just sat there for two years, and I couldn't get the house down, and I kept asking Greg. So something said, I tell you what, something I really hated to do. Okay, you go to the commission meeting, and you pound on Greg until you get that house down so that we can build that parking lot for the Blantilly Museum. So I started pounding on a Tuesday, pounded the next Tuesday, the next Wednesday, the house was coming down. That's what I had to do. But he doesn't do that with all of you, because some of you, he's very nice, cordial, and work with you. And that's what he should be doing with all of us. But that's not so. So I think with Greg Harrison, your attendance, your decisions, your accountability is concerning for me. And I think we, as a commission, we have a decision to make. Now, Commissioner Darlene Smith, I hear you at the end of the meetings, and you always have something very encouraging and positive to say, which is good because it's very motivating, very uplifting. Because one day, I would love to see everybody on this dais get along and just be able to focus on what we're here to do, and that is the residents. I know what you're thinking, and I know what you're feeling. You want this commission to change and look at things in a positive way, and you want all of us up here to act positive and be positive. But that's not what's happening behind the scenes. What you're seeing up here on this dais is a result of what happens behind the scenes on the fourth floor at City Hall. Believe me, it's... I can't even describe it. So after we leave the fourth floor, we come into a commission meeting, and we're supposed to act by the rules of conduct. And forget about how we were treated on the fourth floor before the meeting and during the week. So in my closing, Mr. Harrison, I disagree with you getting a raise. I think we should split those two titles that you have so that possibly you could focus on one and someone else focus on the other. I would love for us to have a better business relationship. I think we've been up and down for the last 10 years. And when I look at my colleague on the side of me, you've been up with him for, since So if I come at you, and I have been since 2016, and like I said, it's not personal, it's business, the money is there. What is holding you back and stopping you from doing it? Is it because it's not important to you? Because it's very important to the people in the Northwest? I have a lot on me. People call me from Cuyahoga City. I can't just neglect them. They need help too. So I am not going to vote on the raise. If you should stay or get a raise or whatever, Mr. City Manager, I would like for us to have a better business relationship, and I've been saying this to you since 2016. It's been up and down. And you can sit over there and probably say, well, you know, I've done this, and I've done that, and I, yes, I know you have. But when it comes to certain things on the east side of Dixie, you move right away. So with that being said, Mayor, what motion do we have on the floor now?
Motion for a 3% raise.
Let's call a vote.
Further commission discussion. Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Fessuck?
No.
Commissioner Perkins?
No.
Commissioner Segerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
No.
Mayor Harden?
Yes. All right. Very good. So that takes us back to our, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
We were going to, I had a motion I wanted to make.
The item's over. You can wait until reports.
The item's not over.
I'm sorry, what?
This was just on the motion, this was just on your motion on the 3% increase.
That's all it was.
Mr. Berman, are we allowed to make another motion at this point on this same topic?
Okay, sure. Yeah, you want to stay on the review? Okay.
I'm sorry, because I was clear in asking initially that we were just on your motion and not on our actual agenda item.
That's all it is.
Okay, well, I still have a review to give.
Okay. Sure, you want to continue with, sure.
So I agree with Commissioner Perkins here that we do have different experiences. And I've seen different sides, and there's times when I'm told things, but then it doesn't materialize, and I'm sometimes looked at as if that never even happened.
Is there a motion? I mean, it's, we went through the review. Is there a motion for anything?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to call a vote of no confidence in the leadership of City Manager Greg Harrison and ask that he resigns so that the city can move forward.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second by Commissioner Fessuck. Very good. Thank you. Go ahead.
I do think we all have different experiences with him, and I've seen it happen over time. It goes up and down. But when you work with someone long enough and you are told things long enough that you don't see happen, or you were looked at and told that that conversation never even happened, you lose something really important in this relationship, and that is trust. We have to be able to trust if we're going to work together. Commissioner Perkins, I will tell you, as you were speaking, he was over there chuckling at certain points, and that's what I routinely experience up here also. And that is just inappropriate and disrespectful. The audience was...
Are you speaking of me?
Well, you always are, but I was actually speaking of Mr. Harrison at the moment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Segerson Eaton?
I can't hear you from here. So, and Commissioner Smith, I was told the same thing when I came in. Everything has to be in email. And then you'll listen to the city attorneys, and you go to ethics training, they say, but don't put everything in email. And Mr. Harrison says absolutely every interaction has to be in email. That's how he functions. That's how we have to operate. But there are limitations to email over time. I can assure you, it becomes very difficult, and that is not a workable relationship to get things done quickly and have to type everything out that every single person needs is, it would put a burden on us that is too much, given our part-time job here. So I think the city needs to move forward. I think we are so divided up here, and I think the dysfunction comes from the lack of leadership and the tactics that have been used to divide us and to disparage and slander some of us, but not others, over the last year or two, and more probably in Commissioner Perkins' case, is unacceptable. And I think the only way to move forward is to get new leadership.
Very good. Commissioner Fessuck, sorry.
Go ahead. So I originally took my time because I wanted to just vote on the motion for the 3% initially and wait. I am confident. Well, first, I want to say thank you for a 1:00 PM meeting being so full of folks because that hasn't happened in a long time, and even before I was elected. The second thing before I jump into this is that I would like to just ask Mayor Harden, I agree with one of the speakers, and I would like you to make sure that I will be happy to provide you any information should you choose to request it. I have my opinion as well, and I would like to share that, and it is all based in research and not, and by personal experience. Ms. Nagle, I just have one other question related to, we received the city manager's salary survey again, and it talks about other comparable city salaries. And I was just wondering if all of those salaries are, is it with just the base annual salary and not with the additional?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ensure that that was the base. I also reviewed the major accomplishments that were provided. And before that, I had my own list. So my first issue is that it has been painfully, painfully difficult to get information without asking to the very specific minutia when some of these things should have been provided as part of the open conversation. In every position and in every sort of work environment where we tell, as we tell staff how we appreciate them, and you're always striving to work together and have open communication, that has been a failure since Election Day, even before I took office. even before I took office. It started with the meeting that was called the lame duck session. It began, it continued with the city's use of, or I'm sorry, the mayor's use of city, city resources to condemn three commissioners. It has continued nonstop. When anybody raises a question that residents are asking because it goes against what has always been done, that there has been this stream of negativity from city officials, from staff, and I asked one time, Mr. Harrison, when it was exceptionally difficult, during the downtown presentations and the propaganda pieces that were being played and repeated everywhere, I was livid at one point, and I asked, who approved this? Who did this? Social media across our CRA, across Pompano Beach, the city website, across New Downtown website, I was livid, and I asked him specifically, who approved this? He refused to give me a name in an email, and he said instead, if you're going, if you're looking for someone to blame, blame me. So I, I just held that and I said, okay, thank you very much. I'm not trying to incite blame. What I am trying to do is, is show that if there's a pattern of behavior, or there's a pattern of things that have been pointed out, and it has become difficult for us to get information or be treated in the way that I would expect everybody should be treated. And I have always tried while being here, I may ask some difficult questions, but I've always tried to treat everybody with respect, even when we disagree. I say please, I say thank you. I try to stay silent, I wait my time, wait my turn. So the, one of the biggest things when I was reviewing the, the list of accomplishments was related to the CRA. And everybody knows I've done a lot of homework on the CRA, so I have an exceptional amount of information that I have reviewed. We've acquired, it says here that, on the list, acquired 18 properties in 10 months to begin development of the new downtown, including the Quick Stop and Saxon Walls convenience stores. Now, I am under the impression that whenever a property is acquired from a, from, with, you know, with CRA or city funds, that generally those properties have to go for an appraisal, depending on the price point. One appraisal is generally required at 500, up to $500,000, and two is generally required over $500,000. This, we did put in our MDA, we did put a, a provision where we set a period, a map space of how, where we're trying to acquire additional properties as a CRA and as a city, as a joint venture. But it's really concerning to me that as of, by the time I took office, I have not seen one approval come before CRA board or city commission for a property that has, for a property in the CRA, for the new, for the new downtown, as part of the CRA board either. And so I asked for a list of the properties that had been purchased, and there were over $10.6 million worth of purchases, 19 properties in the last two years without appraisals or any public commissioner or CRA board approval. That's not the total dollar amount. I, there's a Florida statute, and I was trying to check it against cover, just development and covers, and I'm just curious why these basic safeguards would be ignored. Why wouldn't we be involved in that, that acquisition of property when we're asked months later, and the majority of these properties were, were purchased in the first quarter of this year? If you're asking us to vote on major developments, I would ask only that you involve us in that process as you should, technically by Florida statute. Second thing, Florida, their Florida East Coast Railway has recently been, you know, with the Atlantic and Dixie problem, process. I still, now we're at a $399,000 a year lease rate, if it stays there, but we still have projects here that are not going to be able to be finished because the work began and tens of millions of dollars were spent, if not more, and the work was done before the lease was secured. You had a memo that came out from a city attorney's office that said that, and I quote, in the, in the memo, it said, unbeknownst to the city, the lease expired, and I believe it was January 20th, 2020, I didn't, I have it somewhere in here, but when I went to that particular item, went way back through the annals of, of our commission meetings and, and such, the agenda item where that was initially approved was Mr. Harrison's item, and when you clicked on the backup for that item, very, as part of the FEC and the F dot lease, said in section five, very clearly, the lease was going to end in January 2020. Very simple. So I, I'm, when we're talking about millions of dollars being spent, and millions of dollars being spent, and accountability and, and things, I want to continue to, to just make sure that you understand that it's not just the day-to-day operations that I have concerns with, it's also some of the decisions that are being made that we are living with now. I mentioned sort of feeling like it was weaponized, some of the political, some of the, the blogs, consultant contracts. Again, being told here many times that people were not consultants, or people were not involved in the project, to have people who had vested interests in projects be speaking ill of us or on social media, there's actually still podcasts being, being spent, being, being made, and I'm not quite sure, and I would ask for clarification on this actually, if the people creating those podcasts do discredit some of our sitting officials are being paid by the city. Because that would sort of go against what you're, what is in the consultant contract, where you're supposed to present a positive image of working together and working for a common goal. It's okay if we disagree. It's okay. We will all get through it. We can work together. We don't need to, to, to turn this into some sort of high school and middle school behavior, which I have personally experienced many times, and I'm not complaining, I, I signed up for this, I know, I know what I did, but I don't want to see this. I didn't sign up to work, work in a high school or a middle school environment. Children are grown, I want to, to make the city, I love the city and I want to do what's best for the city, just like I feel everybody who's up here wants to do that. We all have our own opinions, we are welcome to them. But Mr. Harrison, it has created a division, and, and I would, I've asked for it to stop multiple times, and I'm going to ask again for it to please stop. Another interest, you know, in, in the list was related to BSO. And in 2016, our contract with BSO had a 5% cap on increases, as did all of the other contracts that I read through previously, as does the city of Deerfield, if you have seen in local news, news reports. In 2020, when our BSO contract was renegotiated, I'm not sure why or how, but somehow the 5% annual increase cap services was also removed. And that leaves us a little bit wide open to increases that we can't control. I don't dis, I don't dispute that we absolutely 100% need more police services. I think we have grown as a city so much in the past several decades, and I want to commend the officers that serve Pompano Beach for all of the work that they have done, and so many times, double, just doing extra work, double timing, working in an, an office that quite honestly, I find deplorable, and I feel like we owe them so much better, and I've mentioned that before. I find that the money that we've spent on consultants and the money we've spent on, on making mistakes in some of these, these deals could have easily gone towards public safety or paving our roads. The downtown project marketing costs, I still don't know exactly how much has been spent, but I know it's been well over $100,000 at this point. And they were rushed, they were sent out again with misinformation. The narrative that has continued to be spun post our vote, when each one of us sat here and deliberated for whatever reason and spoke about whatever it was on our hearts, or what, based on our research and our knowledge and our feeling, want to make sure, again, it is not about $100 million, and I'm so tired of seeing that same narrative, because we don't know how much would have actually been spent because the project is not yet finalized. Would 5%, 8%, anybody would agree, 5% is less than 8%. But when we don't know what the number is that we're going to take, we don't know what the whole number is yet, we don't have all of the information to make that decision. In addition, we also don't need to be handing over additional ways where decisions can be circumvented instead of coming to commission for those changes. I have asked for CRA board meetings, again, in the division of, of resources and the division of roles. I went back because there have been a lot of CRA board meetings canceled, and I feel that this is crazy because we have undertaken in 2025 so far so much more than I think the CRA has done in, in, in getting things moving in recent years. We have McNabb Park, which we're asked to spend over, almost $30 million on, and we have the new downtown project, which we're asked to invest, again, a lot of taxpayer money. In light of that, we've had three CRA board meetings, and several have been canceled sort of last minute. In recent years, 20, I did 21, 22, 23, 21, 22, 23, and 24, by this point, we had either mostly six meetings by this point in, like, at the end of July, and in one year it was five. So we are at three. So we're also, in the year we've had so much going on, we've had the least amount of communication and opportunity for those board meetings to be held. The reason why I'm sticking a little bit on that one is simply because I asked, related to McNabb House ages ago via email, to be included on marketing, I wanted to make sure, this is in the district that I live, it is our park, it is our community park, and we have lots of development, we have many small parks, and of course, we have the beach, but if this is our community park, and previously this park was used, also had a community center, which was, the building was in disrepair, and I understand that, but there's a tennis court, there's a basketball court, and there's a neighborhood, a full neighborhood, north and south of that park, that actively uses that park, even with the homeless population and the, and the, and the derelict situation we have right now and have had for five years. And the response is spend more money, develop this thing, throw more money at it, and then for everybody who enjoys playing tennis in their neighborhood, drive west. I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, but according to all of our development, we're trying to create a more walkable, bikeable city, but the answer to my residents is get in the car and go somewhere to go find your community interaction? That seems a little backwards to me. And I also don't think we need to be spending another $27 million on that particularly. I've, just three more things. The recent staff reductions, I went to a budget meeting and I was told that we were going to be doing some restructuring. I mentioned some of the numbers, we're obviously going to get into more of them later. But one of the biggest things I think needs to be taken home from this is, city commission had no idea that, I believe, you know, some people want to call it like a happy, happy July, maybe more of a, you know, sort of great, terrible way to start your weekend, and in some instances, some employees were, who didn't deserve to be, were escorted by BSO out of their offices. These are not people who stole, these are not people who did anything wrong, these are just employees, and these are just a few of the stories I've heard so far. I mentioned earlier, and I'll mention it again, I don't feel that asking people to, to retire ahead of their vested interests when they've devoted years and years and decades of years with exemplary performance to a city is something we should do, and I don't think that that would instill in any city employee a level of commitment or a level of, we will take care of you. And that's, that's our job as, as people who are approving the budget. I want city staff to know, I will do whatever it takes to try to save your job and give you your vested interests. You spend so much time and, and heart and just, your love of the city is real, and I want to make sure that you know that I understand that, and I will fight for you and your salary, and I will fight for your retirement. Leaders eat last. And so I don't think we should be approving a budget increase, I don't think we should, or an increase in salary, I don't think we should be saying that it's anything negative towards Mr. Harrison. But when you sit there and you have a salary that is as inflated as you do, and your job, when you're looking at a budget and it comes with several hundred thousands of dollars in, in folks who are just trying to get by, my opinion would have been, I would have, if I truly believed in my staff, I would have personally taken the hit for a year, and I would have said, let me see what I can do, or maybe we can try to make as many senior executive staff members take a hit and cover these salaries because we value you. That's what I would have done. The, I, I'll come back to, again, we mentioned about consultants and, and how I feel things are, are divided. I would have to agree with Commissioner Perkins in that I would, I think that maybe a separation of those roles would be appropriate since we have so many things going on in the city. But I also want to mention that in my research, one of the very concerning things I found was a series of emails that were dated back in 2021 from one of our consultants, who had an email to Mr. Harrison. In the email, it said a very sort of casual, hey, Tex, or hey cowboy, one of the two things, talking about a business owner in, in the Atlanta corridor, which is in my district, attaching a letter that was written to said business owner and telling him, sort of outlining in the email what his goals were, to, to speak with the business owner and to present an idea to the business owner to bring him his business and expand his business in South Florida. That email then got forwarded to Mr. Harrison's executive assistant, who, with the instruction to put his, put this on his letterhead, followed by the email coming back with his letterhead, him signing it, and being sent out to the exact email destination business owner as he was instructed to do by the consultant, followed by another email to let somebody else know and copying said consultant, that he had done that and reached out about a week later. So it's this series of things that, that seeing that in writing for me was a little bit more concerning because although I've suggested it and I've, I've experienced what feels like consultants running the city, that real email thread leads me to wonder and asks me to question myself, that I don't think I'm that crazy. I'm wondering, who is running the city? Is it outside consultants and developers, or, or is it you? I'm not going, I will say that, Mr. Harrison, I'm on, I'm on positive, positivity because I, I, I'm calling out, and I want to make sure I'm clear with this, I'm calling out things that I have found is, as part of a review, should be reviewed. Mr. Harrison, you have always been, when I have come to you with a, a resident's concern, I will give you credit where credit is due, and you have responded many times very quickly to a resident's concern or passed on the information to resolve an issue to the appropriate department. So I will give you that, I will give you that, and when we have one-on-one interactions that are not rife with any sort of political agenda or anything like that, I want to make sure that I commend you because you always treat me with kindness, and I believe you are a true Southern gentleman at heart. Lastly, I would, I went back and I looked at your resume, and it's an impressive one. It spans a number of decades. And I got your email related to the city, the vice mayor, and how you, you know, you want to see things through, and I appreciate that. But I also want to tell you that I appreciate also, sometimes we all realize that maybe we just are not operating at the same level we used to. And at that point, you know when it's time to just sort of maybe let go of a few things, or, I mean, I can't bench press or, you know, lift things as much as I used to without feeling it the next day. And I, and I want to, so I want to commend you on your decades of service to multiple cities, not just ours, and, and, and just ask you to think about it for yourself. I actually would commend the vice mayor for trying to do... I actually would commend the Vice Mayor for trying to do things the right way, and go to you privately. I didn't know she was doing that, obviously, I don't think any of us did, till we got the email, but I would commend her for doing that, because so many times, I think you've mentioned to us, that you would prefer, that we do just come to you directly with any questions or concerns, and I just, I want to call out, like I said, I want to call out only the policy stuff, but make sure that I do end on a positive and say, I truly think you have done a lot of great things, and, as in the words of Seinfeld, George Costanza, so you're just ended on a high note. So, that is, that's all I have, and I was, again, I want to thank you for listening, and I think we still have some concerns, but I would also, I have, but, thank you.
Very good. Curvin, can you read back the motion?
What I captured here as the motion, sorry. It's a motion to be made by Vice Mayor Fournier, seconded by Commissioner Fezick, for a vote of no confidence on the city manager to carry out his duties. That's what I captured. That's what I captured, Mayor.
Okay, so, vote of no confidence?
Yes.
That was it? I thought there was more to it.
Was it more to it? I didn't, I didn't capture the remaining, the additional.
There was more, but you didn't catch it?
Sorry?
There was more, but you didn't catch it?
Yes, there was more, but I didn't, I didn't capture.
Ah, just, you'll get that. Vice Mayor, do you recall what the rest of it was?
Yes.
Could you restate it?
Sure.
And, Curvin?
I made a motion to call a vote of no confidence in the leadership of city manager Greg Harrison, and to ask him to resign, so that the city can move forward. That's what I said.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So that, you got that?
Yes.
Very good. Continued, for commission discussion? Is that Commissioner Segerson Eaton?
I just, asking him to resign is one thing, a vote of no confidence, isn't that, is it sort of the same thing, Mayor? So it's not one or the other, it's, a vote of no confidence would be able to ask him for a resignation, or rather, fire, wouldn't that be a more appropriate term?
It's not my, it's not my motion, but that is the motion that's on the floor, Commissioner, so.
All right, well.
Okay, can you repeat the motion, please?
Curvin, can you repeat the motion?
For, for a vote, okay, motion made by Vice Mayor Fournier, seconded by Commissioner Fezick, for a vote, a vote of no confidence in the leadership of the city manager, and going to be honest, I, and to ask him to resign. And to ask him to resign.
And ask him to resign. So that was the motion, Commissioner?
Okay. Thank you.
Is it? Okay. Further commission discussion? I, I got, I stand by what I said before, but I think you're doing a great job, Mr. Harrison, led the city well, and obviously, there's differences of opinion here. But this is a public hearing, and since we're considering this motion, this motion, Mr. Berman, it's appropriate to take public input?
Yes.
This is a public hearing? Is there any input from the public on the motion? Please come forward, just name an address for the record.
Forty-two Eighty North East Eighteenth Avenue, Dominic Lewis. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for this long commission meeting, and everyone voicing concerns, and annual appraisals are never easy, Mr. Harrison. It's painstaking to watch, as an audience to be heard. I would like to echo, I heard a lot of good things about you, and I've had interactions with you as well, and I want to just throw out a hypothetical, go out there. Let's just imagine, let's take away all the negatives, all right? Let's take away the negatives of some of the things we heard tonight, let's take away some of the negatives of things that's happened in the city, kids getting shot in the playground, let's take away the negative of the city being hacked, the data being leaked, or intellectual capability being compromised. Let's take some of those things that happened over the tenure of Mr. Harrison. Okay? Let's just say, you know what, none of those things that are negative even took place. Let's take a look at some of the abatement of responsibility, let's just say, you know what, that didn't take place, all right? True or not true? Let's just say, look, Mr. Harrison is an outstanding gentleman, he's a great guy, he's a great leader. Even with that said, there's something about leaving the party when you're having a good time. On several instances, I saw Mr. Harrison leave out of here, not feeling well. One time, I saw an ambulance outside. Part of being a great leader is also passing on that torch. Tonight, I had some interns here from Miami Dade and Broward County, and, you know, we're living in the age of AI, in the age of information technology, in the age of information sharing, in the age of autonomous vehicles, in the age of, you know, getting to Mars. And we're living in an age where it's, makes a lot of sense, when you bring on leadership that's also, that's, you know, living in this time, you know, the younger generation. And Mr. Harrison has done a fine job over the years, all right? Let's just say that, right? Part of being that fine job is to say, you know what, let me get the next person to carry on this torch and pump on the beach for the city manager role. That's equally as important, notwithstanding all the great things that Mr. Harrison has done, all right? And I think, you know, if we look at the situation at that lens, then perhaps it just makes sense for Mr. Harrison, again, to pass the torch gracefully, for the things he's done, because it's painstaking to see some of the things happening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Next speaker? Further input from the public on this item? Please come forward, just name an address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is James Martin, my address is thirty-two twelve Northeast Tenth Street. I come to praise Rex Harrison here, he's done, I think he's done a great job here for the city. On the investment side of it, we have bought properties here since after the downfall, and under his leadership, this is a new Pompano, and under yours, Mayor. No doubt about it. My friends and I have invested in Pompano because of its, can I say, the change. Now, we have compared other cities and other parts of the state and country, and believe it or not, Pompano is one of the better ones. And that is because of leadership in the city. Mr. Harrison is an integral part of that, and so is Mayor and the Commissioner in chief. We have seen great changes. And as a matter of fact, some of my family members, some of them have moved from Europe, and now they have properties here in Pompano, and on Southeast Ninth, right there on the water, it's, one of my nieces moved there, my sister also, and they could go anywhere, all right? They have houses in other parts of the country, but they live here in Pompano, their basis here in Pompano. That's on a personal matter. Now, I have a lot of friends that have also moved to Pompano, on the, not only looking in the investment side of it, but you get a lot of bang for your buck, and we look at the Pompano market to be, to be a good one, a growing one. So that all has to do with leadership. Now, things don't come out on their own, all right? So, that's the way I look at it, that's the way a lot of us look at it, a lot of money has come in from Miami and here, and from other parts of the country, directly in Pompano, and there's a lot of other good things to come, because of y'all's leadership, all right? This brings money for the small businesses, many things, especially, people come down here to live, because it's nice, all right? It's going to be nice still.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next speaker? Just name an address to the record.
Barbara Beatnell, sixteen oh nine North Riverside Drive, Pompano. You know, you drive around the city, it's beautiful, there's no trash anywhere, everything's manicured, it's really well-kept. It's come a long way from a city that no one even heard of fifteen years ago, and that's all because of good leadership, Mr. Harrison. So when I sit here and listen to you guys just talk bad about the city, nothing constructive, why don't you say something good for a change? And this ridiculous motion you've made is absurd. So I suggest you take a look at the city, how happy everybody is, and how wonderful it's run, and then maybe you can think about it, maybe do something constructive for a change. Thank you.
Next speaker? Any further public input? Seeing none, public input closed. Further commission discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Fezick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Segerson Eaton?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Hartman?
Absolutely not. Very good. Anything further on the item for the city manager's review? Seeing none? That item is now closed. Thank you.
Mayor?
Now, we have a special presentation, which was set for a time certain at two-thirty, that was quite some time ago. Apologize for that, Representative Lamarcas. Representative Chip Lamarcas will present a check in the amount of nine-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars from the state of Florida, the city, for the Dixie Highway Safety Corridor Phase Three. You sponsored the bill and provided funding for this project during two thousand twenty-five legislative session. Thank you, Representative Lamarcas.
Woo-hoo! Good afternoon, I was starting to think you didn't want the money.
Oh, no, we definitely want the money.
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, the Attorney, and our men and women in green and first responders, thank you for having me here. So this, this commission meeting reminded me of those days on the county commission for a little bit, but who am I to talk? We had a hundred and five days for a sixty-day session, so it went a little long, and I would tell you that this exact appropriation and working in concert with the Assistant City Manager Earl Bosworth throughout the time was, was awarded last year, got to the governor's desk, as you know, we didn't get it through that process, but this year we did, and Susan Goldstein had to leave, but she worked on behalf of your, of the city with her team from the lobby corps, and it was an important, it was an important piece of this multi-phase safety down the corridor, Dixie Highway, and I'm proud to bring the check, and hopefully turn up the happiness here in the commission chambers, and I'll present it to you, Mayor.
Absolutely, I'll be right.
Whoever else would like to come down and be in a picture together.
That's too short.
Just real quick on that presentation, I also want to recognize just a couple of groups, one is the Becker Group, we got Latoya's here with Becker, thank you. Also, as Representative Lamarcas mentioned, we had Susan Goldstein, and she is with the Legis group up in Tallahassee, and they all helped get this across the finish line, thank you to them. All right, let's go ahead and take a ten-minute recess.
We had major outreach efforts, multiple meetings, interviews, surveys, et cetera. Those results are all part of the plan, should anybody wish to see. And this year's allocation, just over a million in CDBG and four hundred and eighteen thousand in home. So very quickly, you could see on the screen to your right, our citizen participation efforts, we engaged these quite some time ago, earlier this year. Alex and I met with a variety of stakeholders and community members throughout the city. We had multiple surveys, and then there was the full comment, thirty day comment period for the plan in May through June. With that, I'll show you our priority needs. Of course, affordable housing is our top priority, and you could see then the goals associated with that. So affordable housing development unfortunately is only eligible with home. The CDBG program, we can't use for new construction, so that's our number one need. Unfortunately, we can't do that. But with CDBG, we do owner occupied housing rehab. Second is the public services. We're capped at fifteen percent of our CDBG allocation for public services. That goes to a variety of programs and nonprofits. Economic development with CDBG as well, for small business incentives and facade improvement, as well as repaying previous section one oh eight loan that the city took out. And then HUD requires us in our budgeting to allow allocate all of our funds to one goal or another, and so our administrative dollars have to be associated with this effective program management. So of course, staff is going to run the program well, just wants to see that goal there. So then quickly, here's our budget for the CDBG program. Reminder, this, the administrative expenses is capped at twenty percent of this grant, so two hundred thousand for CDBG admin. That also allows staff to cover the home program, where you'll see we only have ten percent for admin. Public services at fifteen percent, or a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Housing rehab being our, one of our larger programs, again with CDBG, two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Economic development, forty-three thousand, and then that annual repayment of the previous section one oh eight loan is our largest use, but that's for previous activities, so three hundred and sixty-seven. On the home side, ten percent cap, statutory cap for administration, and then we are required to set aside fifteen percent for CHODOS, Community Housing Development Organizations. These are our nonprofit affordable housing developer partners, so sixty-two thousand set aside for them, and then just over three hundred and thirteen thousand for homebuyer purchase assistance program. So our next steps, with your approval, we are ready to submit to HUD. The submission, we are targeting no later than August eleventh, but with the comment period being over, we're essentially ready to submit. Once HUD approves this plan, the city's program year starts in October first, so we'll receive those funds and begin to deploy them shortly thereafter. With that, I'll, I'll turn it back to Alex for any questions or comments.
Very good. Thank you for that. Alex? Anything further?
No, any questions?
Very good. Any questions from the present presenter at this point in time, or should we open to the public first?
I have a question, but you can open it to the public.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and give it to the public first. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Please come forward. Just name and address for the record.
Good day, Tundra King, one two four North West Fifteenth Street, Pompano Beach. Is this the program for, hey Alex, is this a program for the first time homebuyers?
Yes.
I think last night at the CRA meeting, they were saying that there were additional funds that was left, so did all the money get used this year?
I wasn't at that meeting, and if they were probably talking about funds that weren't related to the home program.
So we had, we, so we didn't have any funds left?
We do have funding available for first time homebuyer as we speak, yeah.
Um, the other question?
Everything, I'd just like to say, if you're, if anybody's interested in the program, everything's on our website. The program is open, there's an inquiry form that we'd ask you to fill out and return to our office, and then we'll start the process from there.
Okay, you, you answered one of my other questions. The other question I had is, is there a breakdown of the ethnicity, I think by federal standards that, that should be available someplace?
Yes, actually on our website, if you go to our performances and accomplishments tab, we have all of the, it's broken down by ethnicity and district. So for the past, since twenty eighteen to present, we have all of that data available for you.
And do those funds, are they available, or is that a part for the rehab program as well?
Yes.
So those funds, because they mentioned last night that if you all run out, that there's twenty thousand dollars. I don't know if that was for last year or this upcoming budget year, but I just know a lot of people have inquired and asked me about rehab for their homes, and some people have even been cited by code enforcement. So I'm like, if we have funds, I think this information should be out there more for the public. I don't know if we're not getting to the churches, or to the sororities, or to the senior citizens' place, but I don't think we should have funds left over when we have a lot of people that need rehab to their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion. Commissioner Perkins?
Yes. The, help me out a little bit here, the, the layout is a little bit different from last year, from, for this particular program. And what I'm trying to find is the, the summary of the actual organizations that receive the funds.
So I actually have, it appeared, it was actually uploaded in the backup, but for whatever reason, the system kind of corrupted that file, and so it wasn't very readable. I actually have hard copies for everybody that I could pass.
Can I see that? Okay. And while we're waiting on him, I, I understand what Ms. King was saying. I usually, for years and years, I would put this out in the community, to let people know that this, these funds were available, but I was being bombarded with the fact that I'm never chosen, I'm never chosen, I'm never chosen, so I'd just given up, mainly putting it out into the community. Because what, what I'm seeing here is that every year, we seem to give the money to the same people, so I guess that's why they're saying, why should they apply? So, yeah, the same, yes, yes, yes. The same every year. All right, thank you.
Very good. Further, Vice Mayor?
Now that I have this, it's, it's helpful, the backup was really hard to read. Why are there some recommendations that, for lower ranked organizations? So it's like, like the eighth ranked one, there's no funding, but the not, the
Can speak to that.
Ninth there is, the eleventh there is, with the tenth there isn't, so I, the ranking, is it subjective to a certain point then?
So the ranking is done by an outside, it's a separate scoring subcommittee that is made up of a member of city staff, a member of county staff, and a member of the CRA staff. When they do their preliminary evaluation of it, they give a ranking of the application. After their ranking of the evaluate, of the applications, our office takes a look at that, and we make comments to them on their ranking. So as you can see, you, you pointed out that Hope South Florida did not receive any funding, and that's because we found a couple of inconsistencies within their application. And there was, there was a few reasons. So one of the reasons was an incomplete application, the other was an unclear benefit to the Pompano Beach residents, the lack of established partnerships or referral process for the city, health and safety concerns, and their program was not yet operational, and they didn't really have a timeframe as to when it would become operational, so that would impact our timeliness and our spending of these funds, so that was another issue. And we, we had to explain this to Hope South Florida, and they understood, and they, they're going to reapply next year, once it's more established.
Okay, because in the backup that was uploaded, when I saw the description of what they were doing, for example, a safe overnight parking program, that, given what's going on with the new law and the homeless issues in the city, that seemed like something that, you know, could be helpful, and maybe we could support. I know Fort Lauderdale has a program on that.
So we're offering them some guidance with their next application, for instance, how they can basically show us that they're actually assisting Pompano Beach residents with that activity, and also, they need to pretty much get their staff hired, they need overnight security, which they did not have at the time. There was a lot of different issues that, with that application that we had, and we discussed it with them, and they understood, and, you know, we're going to work with them moving forward.
Okay, great, yeah, I mean, we see a lot of these same names, and I always think, are they, what are they doing in Pompano, actually, are these countywide organizations that we're just somehow generally funding? But then, when we give the money away, they come here, and they tell us what exactly they're doing, and what the program is, and how they're impacting Pompano, and that's always very helpful, because we realize this is a specific targeted program that we, that is for Pompano residents, and so that's good to know, that they can come back and apply for that again. Thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion. Commissioner Fessick?
Thank you for providing this. This is actually very helpful compared to, I guess, what was in the backup. So, I have just one question related to the, the tail end of, I'm looking at all of these programs, do we have any, because there's a lot of kids, there's a lot that show that they're working with kids and programs with children, and the number of people they're serving. Do we have any, did anybody apply related to, I know that we've recently lost, we've recently lost some funding through the county for school art programs and school, you know, so it's, it's after school programs, but they're, they're basically for art purposes or music, because a lot of times, those, those skills that are taught normally in schools, of course tied into an after school program or something like that, where there's educational activities. But those things can also be life skills that, that folks can, I made every one of my children take music and take band, because it's a language, and they can use that for their education, or fall back on it, you, you run into something, you can pick up an instrument and play. So do we have anybody that has ever applied with, with some arts and music, after school programs in general with this, or no?
The Crockett Foundation does offer some of that in their program. They do focus, this, what they applied for this time around, though, for specifically is for their digital explorers program that helps, that helps kids if they want to get involved in esports, or the computer programming, or things of that nature, but not for so much music or art, but they do have another program that they offer at the Crockett Foundation that I believe that they do do those types of things.
And that, that's great. Is there any way we can, maybe in the future, find additional money for these programs? And how would we do that?
Fortunately, we're capped with our funding source at fifteen percent of our, for public services, so we'd love to fund more programs if we had the money and we were able to, but maybe, maybe there's something we could figure out.
Yeah, perfect, no, thank you, thank you for the work that you're doing.
Very good. Further commission discussion. Seeing, seeing none? Let's go ahead and call a roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harton? Yes, item ten is a resolution.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute work authorization number six in the amount of one million eighty-four thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirteen cents pursuant to the original contract for consulting professional services authorized by ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventy-six between the city of Pompano Beach and Sinolofsky Romanexay LLC for design services for the Pompano Beach Fire Administration Emergency Operations Center building project, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Good afternoon, Dr. Good.
Amy Good, CIP manager. This item is a design work authorization for the emergency operations center, fire administration building, and the fire logistics center, to be located at twenty-one twenty-one Northwest Third Avenue, directly behind or due west of the recently opened fire station sixty-one. We originally designed this, started to design this facility at the current public safety complex, but just realizing it just wasn't an optimal site, it was too small, we ended up going multi-story, which added significant costs. So two thousand twenty-two, we shifted gears under the direction of the city manager Greg Harrison to relocate this facility at a different site, which actually turned out to be far more beneficial and ended up costing a lot less, because we're able to construct, design and construct a single story building, which is less costly. Flat parking, we no longer needed a garage to facilitate parking, and it's also in a much desirable location in terms of flooding, so it's at a higher elevation, more centrally located throughout the city, in terms of it being an effective emergency operations center. And so in two thousand twenty-two, we had rough costs for constructions of upwards of thirty-two million. Today, three years later, considering escalation as well, we're at about twenty-five million. So we're going to try to maintain that budget, and once we're designed, complete the design, we'll come back before you and ask for approval of the construction budget.
Very good. Thank you for that. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions, concerns? Commissioner Fessick?
I just, so you mentioned this, this is looking at now twenty-five million in construction?
Versus thirty-two.
Versus thirty-two, so that's good. When are we anticipating beginning building this, in a, in a perfect world?
So we've, we've already started the conceptual design, because there was monies left on the firework authorization, so we're probably close to thirty percent now, so again, in a perfect world, I'm hopeful that design will be complete in six, nine months, and then we start, you know, permitting, and then, so hopefully, hopefully within a year, we will be breaking ground, realistically, or optimistically.
And this is also, I know we just received this today as well, is this already allotted for in our budget?
I'm not sure what that is.
Our capital improvement plan?
Oh, so, so this was budgeted prior, prior years, so this has been a long time coming, but to our advantage, it, it's a good thing that it took a while, because we, this new site came available, and it's just a much more ideal, desirable site, so this was already previously budgeted, it is a GOBON project, so yeah, it's already budgeted, so you probably will not see it in this year's budget.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good. Further commission, Vice Mayor?
How much money was left in the GEO bond for this, and how much do we have to budget for to supplement that, since we're at the tail end of the GEO bond funding? Do you, do you remember, or?
I don't, I think, I think we're actually under or at budget, because of relocating the facility at a different location, a different site, reducing costs, it being a single story building, so don't quote me on that, but I can find that information out for you.
But you do think that there was maybe enough left in the GEO bond funding?
Yes.
Because I know some of the projects, like the McNabb streetscape, when they came in, over budgeted, there wasn't enough left in the various buckets that were required. And this is a GEO bond project, so I'm surprised to see you here. Are you the, the lead on this project?
I am. There was just a few select projects that Mr. Harrison delegated to, to myself and my team. This was one of them.
Thank you. And then one last question, is this the same parcel that the county had the option for in the land swap deal we did?
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion. Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, can we, Tammy, can we make sure, because this is a GOBON project, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, so is the ultimate sports park. Can we get that one started before this one?
That one, yes. It is, is ninety-eight percent designed, so we, we will be advertising for construction within a couple months.
Okay, great, thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call a roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harton?
Yes, item twelve is the first reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a service contract between the city of Pompano Beach and Limousines of South Florida, Inc., to provide community bus service, providing for survivability, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. Good afternoon, Mr. McCon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Rob McCon, Public Works Director. This proposed contract between the city and limousine, South Florida, LSF, to provide our community bus shuttle service. There's, who currently provides our service, the contract has expired, we put an RFP out on the street, we got five bids. LSF was again, a low bid. Their bid was eighty-four dollars per revenue hour. When you figure the four routes we have, the hours they run per week, that equates to seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, I'm sorry, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, right, right at seven hundred thousand. The good news is, it's funded by the Broward County Surtax on a reimbursement basis, so this, there's no cost to the city, and there's no cost to the residents to use it. It's a five-year contract. That concludes my comments, subject to your questions. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any input from the public on this item? Seeing none, public input closed. Commission discussion, questions, concerns? Commissioner Fessick?
Thank you, I just have one question. Is this that little, that little bus that goes around, the green route?
Yes, actually, there's four routes, there's green, red, blue, and orange.
And what is the, do we know what the ridership on that is?
I do not know the ridership, and I don't know if, if Broward County mandates a, a certain ridership to continue it. We do submit those monthly reports on what the ridership is, so I don't, I don't know which route's more heavily used, but.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because I know that we have, we also get Surtax funds for the circuit, the ride circuit, I believe, is that correct?
I believe they
We just did.
Oh, Ms. Sybil is shaking her head no.
Okay, okay, so maybe I'm, I'm, I'm mistaken, I thought there was some, maybe it was a penny tax or something, I don't know. But okay, thank you. This is great, no cost, lots of rides.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Thank, thank you, Mayor, I mean, it's a service, you know, that's being, we're being subsidized, and, you know, the way I've always felt about it is, even if there's only one rider, that bus is a way for them to get to where they need to go. So, anyway, I'm happy to support this, thank you.
Very good. Further commission discussion? Seeing none, let's call a roll.
Commissioner Fessick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fournier?
Yes.
Mayor Harton?
Yes, item thirteen is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the marine advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach for a term of three years, said term to expire July twenty-first, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate William Gressinger, incumbent, District One. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item fourteen is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the marine advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate one for a term of three years, said term to expire on July first, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and nominate Mark Hanky.
Very good. Mark Hanky, any other nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item fourteen, fifteen is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the marine advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate two for a term of three years, said term to expire on July first, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Hunter Craig, alternate two, District Three. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item sixteen is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the golf advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate one for a term of three years, said term to expire on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Is it, moved, is there
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Robert Hindren, alternate one, District Three. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item seventeen is a resolution.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the golf advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate two for a term of three years, said term to expire on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Stephen Botek, alternate two, District Five. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item eighteen is a resolution.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the San Antonio's advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate one for a term of three years, said term to expire on July first, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Lynn Mitchum, alternate one, District Three. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item nineteen is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the San Antonio's advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate two for a term of three years, said term to expire July first, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Mary Fleck, alternate two, District Three. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item twenty is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the historic preservation committee of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate one for a term of three years, said term to expire on September twelfth, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Robert Witsett, alternate one, from District Three. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item twenty-one is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the airpark advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate two for a term of three years, said term to expire on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Jason L. Smith, who I believe is alternate two, correct?
Yes.
List him as alternate one in the backup agenda, but he is alternate two currently.
Alternate two, sorry.
So I'll nominate him for the position. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous. Item twenty-two is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the emergency medical services advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach for a term of three years, said term to expire on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-eight, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for discussion. I'll go ahead and nominate Michael Miller, former incumbent, District One. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none, nominations closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item twenty-three is a resolution.
Resolution, the city commission of the city of Pompano Beach, Florida, pointing blank to the emergency medical services advisory board of the city of Pompano Beach as alternate two, to fulfill the unexpired term of Patricia McGill, said term to expire on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-seven, providing an effective date.
Mayor?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and second for discussion. Commissioner Perkins.
I wanted to nominate, I guess, Phyllis?
Yeah.
Phyllis Smith.
Phyllis Smith, District Five. Very good. Any further nominations for this item? Hearing none. Nominations closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. That ends our regular agenda. Take up to additional audience to be heard. Do we have anyone still signed up for Audience to be Heard?
We do, Mayor. We have four remaining speakers.
Four speakers, very good.
First speaker, Vicente Thoreau. Vicente Thoreau, are you in the building? Okay. Next speaker, Brandy Zaba- Zabada.
Very good. Just name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Brandy Zabadal and I live in District Two, Pompano Beach Highlands. Today I'm here simply as a mom who cares deeply about this generation and the next. Since COVID, our kids have been faced with major challenges. At Norcrest, art and science programs have been cut. Crest Haven Elementary has lost its PTA. These changes seem small and chip away vital resources in our childhood experience. For many children in this area, the only chance to play outside is during aftercare, which costs two hundred and fifty dollars a month with Broward Schools. That's a lot for families struggling. Thankfully, the city of Pompano Beach offers a better option aftercare at Pompano Beach Highlands, AKA Triangle Park, as we call it. For just fifty dollars, it's safe, affordable, including transportation and tutoring. Families in District Two, including mine, have grown up playing there. It's a place where kids can be kids. But with, but now with that space and danger, the small open field that the kids use daily is planned to be replaced with a dog park and pickleball courts, likely restricting the kids even more. There was little communication with the residents and many of us are concerned about safety, especially with off dog, without dogs on leashes. I get it. I have a big dog named Tucker who would absolutely love a dog park. I'm not against progress, but let's be thoughtful. Instead, taking away their grassy play space can, we can relocate these features to a better spot. For example, North Pompano Park, just three minutes away, has unused fields, more parking, and an existing dog run that could be improved. Triangle Park is small, after, Triangle Park is small. Aftercare fills up quick. Losing it would mean losing something vital. I grew up in Pompano Beach Highlands and I remember playing baseball at North Pompano Park. Fields that were later removed and never replaced. That's a lot. We don't have to repeat this mistake. Let's give our kids the same chance I had to run, play, and touch grass. If we don't protect spaces for children, what will happen when they grow up? Who will we blame then? I've had, I've heard that this project might take ten years, but by then my kids will be starting their own families. Where will their kids play? Where will my grandchildren play? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Willie Brown, followed by Matthew Garner.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Manager, City Attorney, Public. I wanted to come up, Mayor, to say thank you to the city for the giving Kodak Black the key to the city. And I know for many that was quite questionable. But for a person who grew up in the Golden Acres community, as you all know, I grew up in the farm labor camp until they changed the name to Golden Acres. And that award goes beyond the, the public image that you saw. What it says to a lot is that you have a gentleman, a young man, who's coming back, who realizes, you know, that there's still good to do for himself and to the community. And we partnered with Kodak Black. We've been doing Thanksgiving drives out in Golden Acres for years. And the reason why we started in Golden Acres was because by the time the Turks would get distributed outside of Golden Acres, and a lot of the residents there didn't have cars, they would miss out. So we started to, you know, charity begins at home. You know, you can't pass the poor to get to other poor, but at least we can do and try and make a difference. We're planning to work with him on some other initiatives. We've been very instrumental in working with the Golden Acres in terms of the students who are not in summer school, does not have an opportunity to have access to the free lunch, to the breakfast and the lunch. Our organization, Kappa Foundation of Pompano Beach, has been providing that service. And so we've been looking with Mr. Black in terms of some of the programs that we've done that has been effective in terms of really, really giving back and making a difference. So in terms of the key, the key is not just a key to the city for show, but it's a key to come back and to help make a difference. And we're determined to work along with him and his organization. As long as we're trying to help make a difference in impacting the city of Pompano Beach, we'll be there to stand beside. But it's a good picture to see that he's coming back home and he's giving back to the community and he's vested into Pompano, and so that's a good thing for us. So I want to say thank you to the city for acknowledging him on that.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Brown. And thank you for all the Kappas do also. Next speaker?
Matthew Garner. Matthew Garner, are you in the building? Mayor, that concludes Audience to be Heard.
Very good. All right. Takes here of audience, additional audience to be heard. Our next scheduled meetings, we got July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, at nine AM is a budget workshop. So nine AM, budget workshop on the fourteenth. July twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, at six PM is our next regular City Commission meeting. That takes us up to reports. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir. We have a birthday among us tomorrow, Vice Mayor. Happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. All right.
Our BSO substation is ninety-nine point nine-nine percent complete, and we're going to have a ribbon cutting on July fifteenth at ten AM. Beautiful design and we had a great contractor that did a super job, Justin Schiff.
Very good.
We are going to have a budget workshop at the Cultural Arts First Floor Conference Room. So it's not going to be up in the fourth floor, big conference room. It's going to be at the Cultural Arts First Floor on Monday, the fourteenth. Mary? Is Mary still here? Stand up, Mary.
She doesn't want to.
Mary Rivero won a twenty twenty-five National Procurement Institute Achievement of Excellence in Procurement.
Right, very nice.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. No applause. Just wanted to be fair.
And that concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Berman, City Attorney.
Thank you. No report, Mayor.
Very good. Mr. Alfred, City Clerk.
I just want to add to the City Manager's report concerning the budget workshop. It's going to start off here in the chambers, and then after a thirty-minute reset, we'll be over at the Cultural Arts. I just wanted to add on to your comments there, Mr. City Manager. Okay.
Gotcha. Okay, so this, so the budget workshop starts out here.
Yes.
Then we move over there. Gotcha.
Start at nine here, and then at the conclusion of the presentation, thirty-minute recess, reset, reconvene at the Cultural Arts Center.
Very good. Thank you for that. Anything further?
Nothing further.
Very good. Takes us up to City Commission. Commissioner Fessick.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick announcement that July ninth tomorrow, from seven to eight PM, I have my District One meeting at Emmeloot Olson Civic Center. So we will be talking about nothing other than budget. And there's lots of things, of course, that folks have mentioned they're interested in learning more about. So we'll come and discuss that together and, of course, any other concerns. I wanted to just, and I'll keep it somewhat brief because we've been here long enough. I want to make, there was a, there was conversation briefly about the memo that we received and that was discussed at last, at the last meeting, at our last commission meeting. And I heard after the fact that while Mr. Perkins was reading it seemingly for the first time, I think, live regarding the city attorney's memo, that after the meeting, it was brought to my attention that certain members of the audience who were sitting in the lobby had already had copies of this memo that were circulating around the lobby. This was a confidential memo, and Mr. Berman said after the meeting, when asked for it, mentioned to those people who asked for it that it was a confidential memo that he had provided. So, and when I emailed him to let him know that it was then being posted on social media, I wanted to make sure that he understood that I maintained the confidentiality of his memo and questioned why it was in the lobby. So there are a few stories that I heard, and I'm not going to, I don't want to blame anybody, but I would like to know from fellow commissioners or Vice Mayor or Mayor, if anybody else decided to give copies to consultants or anybody else that would have given them a copy, that they would be reading it out loud during our meeting and then providing it to folks on social media. Because I know I didn't. Okay. I mentioned at the last meeting also about revisiting, in light of our budget and budget season, revisiting our TIF split with CRA. And I haven't heard anything back yet on that. So we do, since we do have a full budget meeting on the fourteenth, I think the pushback when I heard from staff was that there may be some debt obligations that would be tied to that. And I did have a good conversation, and a very long one, with some financial folks and Ms. Sybil. But I'd like to see if we can go ahead and, and revisit that so that we potentially may be able to free up some dollars, if needed, to add to our general fund rather than terminate more employees. Or, you know, use it for paving roads. We understand, just have money in our, in our arsenal. Both CRAs have been operational for well over thirty years at this point, and it's standard practice, as I mentioned before, for, as growth happens, to share some of the incremental tax revenue with the city that is also providing all of the services to that brand-new, beautiful stuff that we all enjoy. So I had mentioned several options, sixty forty, seventy thirty, fifty fifty. I think maybe it's just the better idea to start with the lowest at this point and just go seventy thirty and see what the numbers are there. That would free up about two and a half million dollars and change for us if we are able to apply that. But I'd like us to be able to revisit that and discuss that as a, know what our limitations may or may not be by the time we have our budget meeting, if at all possible. And then the last thing I would really like is just to have a full list of the employees that were terminated or asked to retire. I want to make sure that there's any way, if at all possible, we can find a way to move things around in the budget and retain any staff. I said this earlier during Mr. Harrison's review, but I really want to make sure that I, this is a sticking point for me. We have an amazing staff, amazing staff, and we, they pour so much of themselves into the city, and it is our job and is our responsibility for those great staff members that we have, that we make sure that we show them, we put our money where our mouth is, literally. And instead of paying outside consultants, we take care of our own first. And that means taking care of our own through continued employment and making the changes we need to make outside so that we retain the great staff we have here and the longevity of the staff we have here. So I would like a list of, of the employees terminated, or I need, I would like to know what that is, what their dollar amount looks like, so we can make sure that we have that information as well for the fourteenth, so that we can see if there's any places we can retain this amazing staff that has done a fantastic job. The last, sorry, so that was the last thing. This is one, the, I know, I jumped ahead. The revisiting a vote thing, I mentioned in social media earlier again, but I want to make sure I put, I point this out, that I, I don't agree with the fact that the downtown Pompano Beach website currently has a little narrative about how we can reconsider a vote, and there's a, there's, there's a whole lot there. And it was out on social media, and it was out on all of the social media, Instagram, Facebook, throughout the city, CRA, et cetera. This is getting to the point where now it's border, bordering on too much. We voted twice. We voted the way we voted. We made decisions. There was a recall or a renewal or whatever you want to call it. I forget which one it was, which was then shot down again. So until we have new information, I would really like for the social media and the city propaganda machine to please stop. Let's, let's, let's just stop. And that is my report. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just a little confused, Commissioner. You keep talking about the employees, which I'm not, I've been hearing bits and pieces of it in my community, so if there's any information you have, Mr. Harrison, you can share with me so I could understand what Commissioner is saying. I would appreciate it. I wanted to, I just only have two small things. I just wanted to give my condolences out to Ms. Clark and her family. She was, she passed away at one oh three. And I have one left that's one oh four in my district, so we'll pray for her as well. Yeah. So, yeah, she passed away, I think, this weekend. So prayers go up to her. And lastly, I just want to congratulate again. I'm so proud of Blanch Ely High School for achieving an A.
Woo-hoo. Yes.
I must say. Yeah, I, I, I visit Ely High School a lot, and I could see the work that they've been putting out. So hats off to the principals, staff, students, and parents for a very outstanding accomplishment. And that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Sigerson Eaton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind folks that the Crest Haven Civic Association will be meeting on July tenth, seven PM, at the Charlotte Berry Center. Also, the hazardous waste drop-off is going to be in Pompano this month on July nineteenth, nine AM to two PM. Go to the website to see how you should proceed with the hazardous waste drop-off. And our free tree giveaway, which is always super popular, will be Saturday, seven twelve, and Saturday, uh, seven, I'll get it in a minute, from eight AM until, um, three PM. So Saturday, the twelfth of July, and Saturday, the nineteenth of July, for the free tree giveaway at the City Nursery on Tenth and Third. And bring an ID to, or a water bill to show your proof of residency. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioner Perkins, for my number one, number one item, Blanch Ely, A. That's awesome. And congratulations again to our volunteers for CERT. I know that that is such a well-needed program, and it's a lot of intense training, something that I'm guilty of not committing the time to do also, and I think we all need to reconsider getting CERT with CERT. The, something special about community, if you didn't go to the fireworks, you missed a wonderful display. I hadn't been to beach fireworks in probably thirty years. And I went this year, and it, the fireworks were phenomenal. And just as phenomenal as the fireworks was the National Anthem by Felicia Elder. Her voice was amazing, and I know everybody that was there, you were spellbound by her voice. And as she ended the last note, the fireworks began. So it was just like, mark perfect timing with the crew. It was, it was a really great experience. Thank you so much for that. I have some other stuff on here, but I'm just going to skip it for today. And Ralph Waldo Emerson is providing the positive quote, "What you do speaks so loudly that I cannot hear what you say." Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I also just want to take a moment to thank the longtime employees who were let go. I have heard similar stories and have been quite confused by whatever happened here in the city. We were given a list of potential changes at the one-on-one budget sessions, and it was my understanding that, like most years, the opportunity to discuss that as a commission happens at the workshop, the fall, that we have next week. So I was surprised to hear that action was taken in spite of us not having that opportunity at the workshop to discuss it as a collective group. And I can see every time this comes up, Mr. Berman's head shaking. No. So I don't know what that's all about, but when I'm out and about and hear stories and have people talking, and clearly Commissioner Fessick has had the same experiences, we, we, we hear things. So it's frustrating to hear it from the street, not from the city. So my apologies to whatever happened and however it was, it was done. Like Commissioner Smith, I want to say thank you to Parks and Rec, Mark Boudreaux, for the awesome Fourth of July event. It was, it was amazing. The weather was good. The fireworks were good. It was, everyone had a good time. It was a great event. And then I don't have the full list of the schools in front of me with the, with the ratings, but there were some other improvements too. So congratulations Blanch Ely on an A. I believe Pompano Middle is up to a B, which is a big deal here in, in Pompano. And I, I think I read that Cypress Elementary is an A school again too, which is a big jump. So congratulations. I'm sure, I'm sure there's more. We're missing all of them. I'm going to get the list. But congratulations to all of the schools and teachers and kids and everyone who pours themselves into that, because as our schools improve, there's big implications for our city and what a great place it is to live. And then finally, I just wanted to get an update, and it can be via email later, on the procurement workshop and the downtown workshop, what the plan is for those. Thank you.
Very good. Just a couple of things. One, I just want, happy birthday, Vice Mayor, tomorrow. That's great.
Finally thirty.
There you go. And also, I just want to reiterate, jump on what everybody else has said, some of the folks have said up here. Great fireworks, great time at the beach. You know, people have a wonderful time down there. The, the weather, I think, kept, kept the crowd a little down this year. Wasn't quite as crowded down there as it was in years past, but there's still, when I was driving down there at like, you know, eight fifteen, there were just gobs of people walking across the bridge towards the fireworks. Everybody had a great time and, and keep it up. So that, that's it for me. But I see, Mr. Harrison, you've got your, your finger up, so you want to, you want to tag on?
I need to clear up one thing and correct the record on another. The one thing I need to clear up is that all of you saw the positions that were going to be eliminated, the positions. You did not see the individual names. And what I'm gathering here today is that you want to get into those individual names and talk about them as individuals.
That's Mr. Harrison. Are you asking a question?
I'm responding.
I'm asking especially Commissioner Fessick.
Okay, Commissioner Fessick.
What we saw, as Vice Mayor mentioned, was a list as part of a budget meeting, work that was ahead of the workshop, that had a long list. And we, in my meeting at least, we mainly spoke about these proposed changes. It was not, these are the changes, that's one. And two, the majority of what I was, what was discussed during my meeting was the ones that we were not going to fill, the positions that we had opened, not yet filled, that we were going to just not fill this year. So for whatever reason, I was just, I, I, you know, I was in this meeting and I did not, I don't necessarily need to get into every name, but I feel like we should know at least position, tenure, what we're looking, what we're looking at, because I think it's important that if we have the ability to maintain, look, we're a growing city. And we've already experienced the pain with needing more BSO officers and maybe not being able to provide, you know, certain levels of care there because of our budget. We're, we've got a lot of other issues. We have, we're, and so I would just like to know if we're going to make a decision on Monday, that we have all of the information we need to make an educated and informed decision in front of us while we're workshopping.
You bet. We will make sure we do that. We are going to stay out of individual, individuals and names. You all are prohibited by the city charter to get.
I'm not getting involved.
Into that. Okay?
Not getting involved with that. I'm just talking about saving positions.
Thing that I want to correct the record on is, Vice Mayor, I am a Florida resident. I have a Florida driver's license. I have a Florida voter ID card, and I've had those for twelve years now. I have a Florida driver's license. I have a Florida voter ID card, and I've had those for twelve years now. So I'm not a Texas resident, as you had previously indicated, and I do not vote in Texas.
Okay. Can I respond to the question about the names? Because you posed that to the people who brought it up.
Go right ahead.
I do not want names. What I wanted was the opportunity as a group to discuss and learn what the proposed plan was at the budget workshop. What if we collectively come back and say, we don't want to eliminate that position, but somehow between our individual one-on-ones and the budget workshop, something happened? So I, and we had no idea it was happening. So it is, I agree, it's not our job to manage those things, but if you are going to let senior people go or fire senior people, and then somehow it comes back to us that it was in the budget, so you guys, we get the blame that we just let these people go, and we have no idea who they are, it's frustrating. So we should have been warned that you were taking some kind of action like that because we didn't know it was happening, and we got blamed for it. Thank you.
Very good. I just want to chime in just a little bit. Mr. Harrison, and I've been here longer than anybody else. I mean, it's obviously, there's been situations in the past where, yes, there's been employee conflict over various issues, and, you know, the city manager has complete purview in this regard. The city manager, and I hear people saying, well, you know, it's, we've, let's have a fuller picture of the budget so we can find out if we need to cut that position or let that person go. That's, if the city manager says he doesn't need that person or that position, that's the city manager's purview. And I mean, that's, yeah, and sometimes people get fired. It happens. And sometimes people are let go, and yeah, it hurts. And sometimes people transfer to other positions within the city also because a position gets eliminated, sometimes there's other positions they can transfer into. So I would just, you know, yeah, you never, you never want to see anybody lose their job, but I mean, sometimes it does happen. And I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't sit here and tell the city manager, well, you keep that person hired if he doesn't need that person. That's just, you know, just out, just talking. Commissioner Perkins, go ahead.
That is exactly what I was saying earlier when it comes to communication. I'm pretty sure there are at least two or three of you commissioners up here already know who we're talking about. It's just certain ones don't. So it's just all about communications. I know that when I approach the city manager with an issue in my district, his first question is, how do you know that? How do you know that? Because he wants me to call names. I know that because you should know it, Mr. City Manager. The thing is, you're not going to give up your name. I'm not going to give up my name. People have been talking to me before I was elected. I know a lot of people in Pompano, and so do you. So people talk, and when they talk, why shouldn't I be able to pick up the phone and call you and say, well, what am I hearing? Is this correct or no? We don't have that relationship with you. Rex does. The other one down there does, and probably Phyllis, I mean, Ms. Smith. But yeah, that's the issue that we have, and I could see the frustration on your face, and that tells you about this stias right here, why you're seeing the friction like you're seeing it. Some know, some don't. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. All right. I'm sorry. This is still my report. No. When I'm done, I close the meeting. You got a question, Commissioner Fessick?
I just wanted to, I wasn't finished addressing the statement. I fully agree you have full, you have full purview, but I found out about this on social media. And so I, again, don't feel like I should be finding things out and then having to truth or fact-check through the city when they expect to come to me with, with answers, you know, with answers. They have questions, and I need answers. And so that's all. Thank you.
Very good. This meeting is adjourned.